People should be able to hear us.
Okay. Okay. It's on jazz, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Um, yeah.
Okay. Good evening. This is the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for April 5th, 2022. Before we go to the agenda, just a couple of issue items. One, we are live streaming on YouTube, the entire meeting. In addition, there is a link for Zoom connection that you can be found on the Select Board meeting agenda for April 5th, tonight's meeting. And that can be found on the Town of Camden website under the Select Board Agenda item for this date. I'm not going to go through a lot of details because we don't have a lot of people on Zoom. But just in case, when you're on Zoom, please understand that the accessibility to meeting will be the same as those of you who have come here live. You can raise your hand and ask for it to be addressed question and answer and speak to the board. Similarly, I request the same thing from people who are on Zoom to do the same, have the same courtesy and not use the chat function. You can ask a Q and A, a question, but we strongly suggest raising your hand because we can't always get to all questions and all hands raised during the meeting. With that, we will go into our agenda and start as usual. Do we have any, first item, do we have any public input on non-agenda item? Please, young lady. She raised her. Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mark. So you don't have to ask me or wonder later on what I said. Here you go. And then I'll.
Somebody came prepared.
Yeah, I even wrote mine in bigger print. You want one?
I'll follow along.
My name is Margaret Jones. I'm at 13 Mountain Side here in Camden. And I'm coming before you as the President of the Board of Mountain Side Community Cooperative. So I'll just get right into reading that.
Please.
Okay, Mountain Side Community Cooperative is a 55-plus resident community of manufactured homes consisting of 52 affordable housing units. We come before you regarding the recent property assessment values adopted by KRT appraisal, which were then adopted by the Town of Camden and sent to the residents of our community. MCC is one of the few affordable places to live in our town. As a community, we have gone to great measures to assure the stability of our park residents. Homeowners have selected Mountain Side to control expenses as they go into retirement or when there's already, already are fixed incomes. MCC is one of the, where the three years ago, the stability of our community was threatened when it came for sale. And with the guidance of CDI and ROC, we formed a not-for-profit corporation to assure the life fees for our homes remain as a manageable level. Now, rather than being owned by a property-making entity, each homeowner has a share of the corporation. Monthly fees are based on the actual cost of debt services, taxes, and rental maintenance of property. While all homes in MCC are member-owned, occupied, providing pleasant and affordable housing, there are significant differences between selling and manufacturing a home community or selecting other more conventional housing options. First would be mobile homes traditionally do not appreciate, they depreciate. HUD considers the life expectancy of a mobile home built today to be 30 to 55 years. I've attached a spreadsheet here, which deals with the age of our homes, the previous assessments, the new assessment, and all sorts of numbers. And the second would be funding. Traditional mortgages are not available for units placed on land that's not owned by an individual. While MCC is a corporation owns the land, each member owns a share of the corporation, but they do not own the land under their homes. As such, these homes are considered chattels. They're not subject to regular mortgages. You can only get a chattel loan, which is designed for personal properties, like planes, holidays, and old homes. And these loans are designed, the rates for these loans are significantly higher and shorter in duration. In the case of used mobile homes, the age is a big part of the calculating accuracy of rates, the loan duration, and the value of assets. Since the beginning of 2020, our nation has faced many challenges brought on by the pandemic. Mountain Side is no exception. We have worked with our community members to pull through these trying times. As if the pandemic had not been difficult enough, we're now facing rapid inflation as the wage increases in the basic means of living, so everything from our utilities to the.
Turn the mic on, please.
Just a button, just press it. Yeah.
Perfect.
I'm green, I'm green. Hear that? I'm green.
Makes it really good that you wrote it out, too.
Okay. The recent assessments, which appear to be based on inflated prices brought on by the panic buying of homes during the COVID, have raised property evaluation for MCC's aging mobile homes an average of 54.6%. Some homes have increases ranging from 64.7% to 106.5%. Some, the inevitable property tax increases will place yet another burden on residents who are living on fixed incomes. And you can see the calculations out based on current rates in the spreadsheet. Higher appraised values put the premise of our affordable housing community at risk. With the mortgage restrictions placed on this type of housing, it will be more difficult for moderate and fixed-income buyers to obtain affordable funding to secure their futures. We respectfully request that the Town of Camden take into consideration the unique circumstances of mobile homes in our community and revisit the recent assessments of MCC housing. We thank you for your consideration, Mountain Side Community Park and its many residents.
Margaret, thanks for coming. You've hit on a nail on the head. We certainly understand the frustrations and concerns right now with increased values and.
We hope that, we hope that you can take into consideration that we kind of have a unique situation.
You do. Thank you, thank you for coming.
I have a question. Have you met with the assessor yet? Have we had meetings? Have they set up meetings yet?
I left.
Okay.
I left off one of these.
Okay. Because when they send out the new evaluations, it'd be a period where you can meet with the assessor to discuss this, and it's important.
That definitely already started.
They already have.
Yeah, they started.
The assessments have gone out.
Yeah, they sent a letter and you can schedule a one-hour call.
Correct.
But they're gonna just give you some information on how they calculated this. They're not gonna discuss any particular, no.
Margaret's talking a little different topic here. I get it.
Yeah.
I get it. Allison, do you have a question to ask?
Yeah, I mean, I just thought it might be helpful to review the roles and responsibilities here, that it's not something that we have any control over, at least as far as I know.
No, well, Audrey, you can address it or I can address it. As far as why we had to do the assessment.
Yeah, I think maybe sort of going into the details tonight might be a little too much, but I think I will certainly write an email in response to this with the assessor. And you can set up a meeting with, with the assessing office, and they can sort of go through some of the finer details. Because there is some, some good news, so that, you know, the calculations that you did based on the current mill rate, the mill rate is going to change as a result of the revale. And so that's going to, and, you know, there, there will be, you know, some people whose taxes will go up, but not as drastically as if the mill rate were to remain the same. So that's, that's just one factor of many to talk about, but I think there's some, there's some news that'll be of comfort to everyone there. And, you know, there'll be certain things that are, you know, still going to be a challenge. But, you know, I'll certainly work with the assessing office to sort of, you know, explain this and give you a response, and then also set up a time where you can ask some more detailed questions.
Okay, I didn't expect to walk away with an answer.
Well, Margaret.
This is like, please be aware.
Yeah, we are, we are, did a good job, Margaret. Thanks for coming. Good to see you. Steve, you had your hand up first, and then I'll.
That's, that's where we need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Audrey, you see CS on.
Stephen Gold, Grove Street.
If we can have, just one, one second, please. If we can, Marge, is it Marge?
What?
What's her name, Marge?
Yes.
Marge, if you could send me an electronic version.
Let's.
Email of this, is it possible? Could you email it to me?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Sorry, Mr. Gold.
It's okay, this is just a quick question. Not sure about the nature of this particular meeting. So my question is, will we be allowed to speak on item 4B, approval of town meeting warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's an open select board meeting. Was there, you had your hand up.
Yes.
Yep, your coat here, please. Sorry, it's just where the microphone is. Neither am I.
So I'm also from Mountain Side, and I did speak to the assessor's office.
Name, please.
Sherri Whiling.
Thank you.
The assessor's office said they could not do anything about it because of the market value, so-called. We have been trying to sell our house for over a year. Nothing. And when we put the house for sale online, there were photos, and our taxes were raised just from the photos. No assessor, just from the photos. I went and talked to the, or I emailed the treasurer or the real estate, whoever does it, and he pretty much didn't give me any kind of assistance. So we've been, like I said, we've been trying to sell our house. So we can't, and we're having to take it off the market. And that means that that house is not worth what you all, I mean, you doubled the amount since the, the original tax assessment.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just not something that, you know, Margaret made all the points, but I just wanted to let you know, I did talk to the assessor's office.
Thank you, thank you.
And even though you supposedly don't say you have, you know, with the assessor's office, you people hired whoever works with the taxes, and they hired the appraisals. So to me, you all should have some kind of implements on that, considering, you know, you're the ones that are elected to take care of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We're not getting into a long discussion, but I mean, the entire purpose of it is to make sure that the assessed values match the actual values. So I would assume that they would be actually very interested if the house has been on the market for the, you know, the same amount that it's assessed for and it hasn't sold. That would be, I think, really relevant information if it were shared directly with the appraiser.
I'm sure she did, I'm sure she did. I'm sure she did. And.
I mean, I think she's making some good points.
Well, I understand, but I also got to understand that, and Audrey will verify, the assessor, and what it does is regulated by state regulations. The assessor does not report to us. We, we don't, the select board does not get involved in the mill rate, and that's done by the assessor. And his calculations are per the procedure of the state and the state statutes. So, yeah, I get, I can understand the concern, believe me, it's not, you're not the only one, there's many people.
Can we speak to with the state?
I, I don't.
Main Revenue Services, Property Tax Division?
Thank you. Does anybody else have a non-agenda item that I didn't see? Yeah, Stephanie, please.
I'm Stephanie Smith. I live at 210 Washington Street, and I want to speak also to the letter we got about our taxes, our, our houses being reappraised. And I think what was unfortunate, because I've heard a lot of people, whether they're in this housing group or my neighbors, there wasn't enough information in the letter we got from the town to assure us about the mill rate, to assure us about how this would impact us. So I've heard a lot of people alarmed about their impact, that a little more communication might have helped lay, so.
Thank you, Stephanie, I would agree with that. It's complicated, and I can assure people that if they got a 40% increase in taxes assessment, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't translate directly to a 40% increase in taxes, property taxes.
There is actually, there's a frequently asked questions section on the town website now that does go through some of this.
It does.
I agree, I mean, it is really confusing.
And to the mill rate, I would agree, that's a great question, because we won't really set the mill rate to about August.
So they don't like to speculate by saying it's probably gonna go down, or, but.
Even as a technical person, the calculation is rather convoluted. It's challenging, it's something that Audrey understands, I know she does, and so is Kerry, but he, he's the one that sets that, not us. But that's important to have that number so you can accurately answer the question about your property tax increases. But in general terms, you know, when you, we increased the total valuation of town about 21%, I believe is the number. That's the total value, everything in the town. By the way, it's $1.7 billion. It's not small, little old Camden. 21% increase immediately, you know, that's gonna reduce your, at that point, same valuation, I'm sorry, the mill rate immediately goes down to some chunk. It doesn't have to be 21% because of the calculation, but it goes down dramatically, so it actually lowers taxes at that point. Now you get into increased prices of your homes, that's, you get into differentials, but we can't really speak to the exact numbers yet. But again, just to understand, a 30 or 40% increase in your property assessment does not reflect a 30 or 40% direct impact to your property taxes. But we will be addressing this more, and I think it's good to refer to the frequently asked questions, ask more, we can help. And I know it's not easy, and certainly concerning, the dynamics of our world today, financially and economically, is not simple, it's getting more complicated. We've all filled our tank in the last two weeks, and, or tanks, we know it's getting to be a challenge, so we get it. Anyway, we're gonna go on with our meeting. Is anybody, before I go on, is there anybody else that, I didn't see any other hands, I don't want to ignore anybody. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move on to the second one, which is the approval of the board minutes from March 21st, 2022.
I've looked through the board minutes, and I think they're, basically, they're fine. There are some small typographic errors, you know, where a word is left out, I think, done quickly. So I would make a motion that we approve the board minutes and have them reread and maybe corrected little bits and pieces where I, I saw some, some construction errors.
Let's hold a second, I think people would like to leave.
A second?
Okay, let's give a second, just, I didn't think that many people here about taxes.
Try the meeting out with two different computers now, it's for some reason just black, I don't.
Either the house is malfunctioning.
I mean, there's no other explanation than that, but.
Not to worry. As long as it sounds there and all, it's absolutely fine. Okay, just again to. To the meeting minutes, Margaret, you motioned to accept with some.
Correction, some grammatical errors.
Okay, just for a grammatical review, and Sophie, a second. Are there any further discussion?
I just want to say, I was, as I was reading them, I was like, somebody that knows what's going on wrote these, and I, just the quality of them, it was actually probably a better quality synopsis than the actual conversation that it was describing. So I personally really appreciated reading that, thank you, Janice.
Okay.
Thank you, Janice.
Excuse me. With that, I want to go for a vote, all's in favor, acceptance four to zero, thank you. On item three, which is a public hearing for, regarding the adopting of moratorium ordinance to prohibit installation, construction, modification of piers, docks, floats, or ramps within the bounds of the outer and coastal harbors defined in Camden's harbor and waterways ordinance. The purpose of a public hearing is for, to, for the public to provide input to the select board on the matter at hand and to comment on, in this case, this moratorium ordinance. I would request anybody who wants to speak to come here and identify themselves, please be courteous, whether you're speaking for or against, or just want to comment on it. Any questions, please direct them through myself, so we can keep moving efficiently. When we, when we've gone through all the public comments, I will terminate the public session, the public hearing portion of this session. There will be no, I'm getting feedback here. There'll be no more, excuse me, input from the public unless the select board has a question of somebody who has spoken prior to that. So with that, I'd like to ask if there's anybody here from the public who would like to address this moratorium ordinance that's sitting here today? Steve, please.
It's gonna be at least a triple tonight.
That's okay.
Stephen Gold, Grove Street. Basically, just like to say that I've been working on this for 10, 12, 13 years when I used to be on the harbor committee, you know, and I would hope that this moratorium not only would pass, but during that time, the planning board would be assigned how to rewrite our ordinances that at the end of the moratorium or the closest town meeting, permission to build these piers is wiped off of our books. One of the things that a lot of people might not realize is that in a tidal community like ours, most of these piers are standing 10 feet above the water for a significant amount of the day. And that especially hit me one time when I was on Lake Beach with my grandchildren, and I looked over and couldn't see Curtis Island because of one of the new piers on Bayou Street.
I see, I see, I see, not fog. Thank you, Steve. Anybody else in the public would like to address this matter at hand? I'm not seeing any more hands, I will close the public hearing portion and revert to deliberation by the select board. Any board member want to comment on the draft that's in our packet regarding this, this moratorium? Allison.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the people that have put in a huge amount of work into this in the past. I, you know, reading old articles, it's kind of staggering the amount of time that's been put into good quality recommendations sometimes in the past, that you realize it was, you know, it was just one vote or two votes on a, you know, a select board here or there that kept something from going to voters. But there was a tremendous amount of good quality thought that went into the idea of restricting the, you know, continued piers and having more and more of them. And so just thank you for, for those that have put that time, and I think that's kind of what we're trying to do here, is circle back and give people a chance to vote on something that they never got to vote on before.
Anybody else before I? My, my comment is a suggestion to simplify this somewhat, because from my perspective, we started thinking about this, or discussing the moratorium in general for piers in our harbor, without specifics necessarily in outer harbor versus the coastal harbor. And from my way of thinking, this effective date should be that date, March 15th, 2022, for both the coastal harbor as well as the outer harbor. I don't see a reason why it can't be. Any comments?
I agree.
I think Jeremy mentioned in the, in the details that because of when it was mentioned, it legally needs to be the 21st, but he'd have to address that or Bill.
Really, to get into what we were, whether, I'm, I would definitely say that I threw out coastal harbor in the, in the discussion. It was a, we didn't really go deeply into the delineation between the coastal harbor and the outer harbor. It was a, definitely a general concern, I would say.
And also, we're only gonna rewrite one ordinance that will address coastal and inner, and we're not gonna have two different dates for the effective date of the ordinance if it goes. So I don't think, I mean, I think we need to mention the 21st, but I, I don't think it's gonna impact the writing or the content, although I'm looking at you, Bill.
The only reason, this is Jeremy.
Go ahead, Jeremy, go ahead.
The only reason that I had the 21st left in there was, that was the motion that you made.
Understood.
At the last meeting.
I understand, Jeremy.
And Bill and I had this conversation whether or not to include the 15th and just say the 15th, but your motion from the last meeting said, did say that the 21st for the coastal.
No, I, I totally agree, Jeremy, this is, this is a change from what we discussed before, I get that. And from my perspective, I don't see the problem with making the change, I'm not suggesting you try to slip one in on us, but I think it's just to simplify it, we should, well, with the first date, unless you have anything else to add, Bill.
No.
Okay. That's the shortest answer I've gotten from an attorney.
I'm gonna use that, because it's a really good one.
Yeah, so basically, I guess what we're saying is just remove the reference, the one sentence that says, the coastal harbor. one sentence that says, "The coastal harbor," and modifying the previous sentence so it reads, "The effective date of applicability for outer harbor and coastal harbor shall be March 15th, 2022, the date of introduction of the moratorium ordinance by this Camden Select Board, period, and deletion of the following sentence."
Sounds good.
All right, with that.
Some moved, she said it first. Second.
The motion made in the second is further discussion? All those in favor, four, zero. So this item will be added to the town warrant for the June, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeremy, go ahead.
I was just going to say, when you get to the warrant language, we'll just have to tweak that as well, same sentences need to be deleted.
You got it, okay, thank you for reminding us of that, I appreciate it.
Bob, I have one comment, I need to step back for just a moment on our minutes from the last meeting, there is one specific thing that definitely needs to be changed on 4F, it says, "Setting the date for select board budget and review and approval." It says Tuesday, August 29th at 6:00 PM, and I believe that should be Tuesday, August 19th at 6:00 PM. So we should make sure that.
What date?
August.
Excuse me, April, I can't get that, Tuesday, April 19th instead of April 29th.
You're absolutely right.
Because April 29th.
Absolutely right, do you want to revise your motion and last?
So revise the motion so that specific correction is made along with any grammatical changes.
A second.
You accept that second, Sophie?
A second, yes.
All those in favor, four, zero. Thanks for that correction, Mark, you're correct. Onto the item four on our action items, which is a consideration of moving the following two citizens' petition to the June 14th, 22 town meeting warrant. Not going to read them at this point in time, but I think the best way to start this is, obviously, it's a rather different situation, and I think the select board bill requested that you take a look at, you know, this issue as it has unfolded, and can provide background in terms of the complications or not, that this may portend in your recommendation.
Hello, everybody. So it's going to be my, it is my recommendation that the select board put neither one of these articles on the warrant, and I have spent some time looking at this and also speaking with Maine Municipal Association, I'm just going to sort of give an overview of why I think that is the correct thing to do, and perhaps if there are other questions, I can dig deeper into my outline. But the, my view is looking at the nature of the way these are drafted, the fact that they both conflict with each other, and if both passed will create quite a bit of confusion. And they also touch on what's been called the ping pong effect, which is that where there's a warrant article passed, a citizen's petition seeks to revoke that, another article that tries to revoke that, and it's what has been called in the case law, the ping pong effect. These are issues for the select board's discretion, because by statute, the select board is the gatekeeper of warrant articles that go on to the warrant. They are, of course, reviewing these petitions because the charter requires them to review them. But we've also, if some of you have some memory, addressed this in the past where we've had similar results, and those would have been several competing warrant articles back when the area, which is now the Riverwalk, trying to remember the exact term that's in the conservation easement, there's a portion of the Apollitary property that is subject to a conservation easement through Coastal Mountains Land Trust. And we had multiple competing articles for the annual town meeting, and similarly, the select board did not put those articles forward. The test is a bit of a vague one, the statute that applies here simply says that the select board has discretion to decide whether an article should go forward or not, and then the opportunity is there that if the petitioners wish to prove that the select board has unreasonably denied putting a warrant article on the warrant, then you can address that through a statutory process as well. So that's sort of my brief overview, I can go into more detail if people would wish, I have looked at this fairly carefully. I've also had a conversation with Maine Municipal Association just to see if they had any contrary views, and they did not. And that's sort of my brief summary, and I can go down rabbit holes if anybody would like.
Any questions from the board, onto Bill? Go ahead, Mark.
Not for Bill, I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Personally, I would, at the right time, I would like to see the town vote on this issue, because I'd like to know where the town stands on both sides. The last meeting we had where this was brought up, there was a discussion about a citizens' committee where every viewpoint is represented, and we have a chance to really dig into this, because this is sort of, I think it's too soon to make any decisions about should we or shouldn't we, because I don't have the science that I need yet to make a decision about where we stand on this. I mean, I think we need restoration, I don't know how, I can't say yes or no that the Montgomery Dam affects flooding and, you know, because there's science on both sides. And I'd like to know more before we get there, but eventually, I think it's just too soon for this vote. I want to see the town vote on this issue, so we have a town decision, but I'd like the town to have more information.
Any other comments, discussion, questions? Yeah, Ray, sure. Ray and Grayson, Camden, Cove Road, and a member of the Save the Dam Committee, I think you have just thrown a bomb out here tonight. I think our side, and I'm sure the other side, we're expecting to see both of these petitions on the ballot. The thousand, the thousand members, the thousand citizens of Camden who have signed those petitions are expecting then to see them on the ballot. And yes, they are conflicting, and you could wind up with both of them passing, and then it's up to a legal determination or whatever. But I think to take away the vote of the citizens of Camden on this issue that both sides are very passionate about is the wrong thing for the select board to do, absolutely the wrong thing. You can find precedence for that, and I'm sure there are precedents in either this town or other towns, we've had citizens' positions in opposition and being voted on. And yes, some citizens are going to be confused by the two sides, it's our job to educate them between now and June 14th, but don't take away this opportunity for them to express their views on what is really a big issue in this town. And the town is going ahead, I believe, with finding a consultant to talk about redoing the river, you've already spent a lot of money, when, yeah, I think that's enough. Thanks, Ray, thank you. Tom.
Tom Roth, former resident of Camden. And I think it would be a shame if the citizens didn't have a right to vote on this issue. Shall the town of Camden protect, preserve, and maintain, repair the existing Montgomery Dam near Harbor Park in Camden? It's very straightforward, we had a lawyer write this article to make sure it was written the right way, and I just, I think it's terrible, I just, I mean, every single time an issue comes up now, and if there's an opposing, if someone opposes, they could just do this very thing, and it could be turned away, you know, this deserves to be, the town deserves to vote on this, and I think it's a shame.
Thank you, Tom. Any other, Allison, go ahead.
I mean, if the petitions were a result of some action that were about to happen, if there were plans to remove the Montgomery Dam, for instance, and that was underway, and the petitions had been circulated, or a petition had been circulated in order to prevent that, and we were making the decision to not put, you know, these competing things on the ballot, I would understand the frustration a little bit more, but the Montgomery Dam isn't at risk of being removed. Right now, all we're doing is continuing to evaluate so that Camden voters can be presented with something meaningful. So as a result of the petitions not being put out, or this, you know, one in particular that you're upset about, to save the dam, the dam actually doesn't need to be saved right now, so, you know, the select board doesn't have any, there's no action that's, you know, needs to be prevented exactly right now, so.
Okay, but Tom, do you want to respond to that?
You have decided to remove the dam.
No, that's not true, no, that is absolutely false. You, my comment I was going to make, Tom, to this issue following Allison's, is, you know, in my mind, there's a basic thing we have responsibility to do as town elected officials, and that's one is to investigate, develop information which leads to knowledge, with knowledge which leads to a, you know, a well-thought-out decision. We are still, and have been, in the development of knowledge. I get how some people might feel, that, but there's been no action by this board to suggest at any meeting that that dam has to be removed, and that's the decision, we're not there. And to disrupt, that's the only reason why, you know, by the way, it's a difficult decision for us to, trust me. We're committed to listening, to developing information from all sides as we go forward to get to a logical point, not just on Montgomery Dam, but other river restoration elements, and to suggest that we shouldn't do our job to do that information gathering, to me is, that's the rub for me, that's to Mark's point, where we're probably a little premature to be, you know, shooting something we haven't even done yet.
People just deserve the right, we, they've already expressed themselves, we have the petition, and they deserve to vote whether or not to protect, preserve, and maintain the dam. You can't just take that away.
Can I ask a question? I support, and I just said, I support having the town vote on the issue before we can do anything, and the town almost, there's another issue coming up later tonight, where I believe the town needs to have the ability to vote, and it should not be in the hands of the select board, and I believe that for the damn thing, too. I still think it's too early to do this because we haven't done the research, there's not enough figures, there's not enough information. Is there a problem if this is not a June ballot, but maybe it's a November ballot? If, are you okay if the fact that, once the information, once everybody's satisfied that we know all the information, and then the town gets to vote, what's the difference between June and November if nothing else is going to happen?
I think the people just, it's, the people deserve to vote in June, and once they are heard, that's the next step. That's where I am.
The only thing we're doing right now is evaluating designs, and people, it's very difficult for people to make a decision if they can't see designs, we're only in the phase of looking at what.
Information gathering.
Scenarios could look like, and what they would cost, including preservation. So I think we just want to fill out that picture.
Yeah, I saw some of the hands up, I think it was Ken.
Thank you, my name is Ken Gross, I'm a resident of Camden. We have put our faith in the democratic process, we follow the rules, we had a petition drawn up with the help of a lawyer, we went out and got a petition signed by over 500 citizens, those citizens deserve not to be disenfranchised, that is what you are doing, you're pulling the rug out from this democratic process. How can we trust the town government, how can we trust you if you have a rule where the town people can address the governing body through the use of a petition? How can you pull the rug out from under those people who with good faith, trust in the system? We are counting on having a vote in June, it is not premature. The information in this vote will help you decide the parameters that you hand on to the engineers and the planners and the sketchers, it is not too soon to do that. We are adamantly opposed to this notion of putting it off, of disenfranchising our petitioners. Several people said we should be here tonight because they were afraid that the select board would pull a fast one, and I said, that's not going to happen, these, we've done it right, there's a petition, there are two petitions, you need to obey the petition procedure, you need to approve this and put it on the warrant. Should I have come here tonight with a lawyer to explain that to you? I think it's clear to you what your responsibility is, this is written into the law, and we have followed the law and put our good faith in the petition process. We count on the petition process, it is the basic, primary right of democracy in Maine and the United States and across the world. How can you pull the rug out from under a citizen petition done legally, signed by hundreds of people? We believe that now is the time to set these design parameters, and I could go on about the plans to remove the dam, yes, we have all seen plans to remove the dam, we have been waiting for three years for having to see alternative sketches and plans presented, and after three years, it has not happened. We don't have any right to expect that it ever will happen, but we do have a right to expect that this article will be put on the warrant and voted on on June 14th.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
One second, Ray, one second, one second. Tony.
Thank you, Tony Grassi, 363 Belfast Road in Camden. So I'm a member of the Restore McGonagall group, as you know, and in spite of what Ray has said, we actually think you've, this is the right decision and the right thing to do. We've argued for a long time that we'd like to see this vote, this issue brought to the Camden voters in November rather than in June, and had discussions with our neighbors, they felt the town needs to have a more concrete plan for the future of the McGonagall River, and the protection of Harbor Park that can possibly be available by June 14th. We want a knowledgeable expert to lead a process, also overseen by a small group of community leaders, we agree with the Save the Dam folks on that, excuse me, on that concept, that would include lots of time for public input and lots of time for the public to learn about the issues. We want a vision that is comprehensible to the town residents and takes into account all the factors involved in flood control, aesthetics, environmental, and ecological benefits. This vision may not be accomplished all at once, but if Camden voters and taxpayers know what they want the river to look like, and know what they believe is in their best interests, we believe they will support it, and they will support you in finding a way to make it happen. We don't think this is a fast one, this is a concept that we have thought about ourselves a lot as to, so what the select board's alternatives might be. You've been advised by council that this is an appropriate legal action, and we don't think you're disenfranchising the voters at all, we think you are on a course to allow the voters to actually make an educated decision rather than one on a narrow subject in too short a timeframe. So thank you for your thoughtful consideration, I know this is a tough issue, but we're, in contrast to what Ray said, we're fully in support of this recommendation by your council.
Okay, one second, Ray, just one second, I just, Bill, is there, you've heard some of the comments, this, but your analysis and information that you've given us suggests we're not one doing anything illegal if we were to disapprove these two petitions going to the ballot, correct?
Yeah, and maybe I can just, I mentioned going down a couple, being a little bit more detailed, this may or may not help folks, but the nature of these two draft warrant articles are. This may or may not help folks, but the nature of these two draft warrant articles are advisory. They are essentially, they fall in a sort of a broader category of political statements. And part of the reason is, and I discussed this with MMA as well, is that there's no appropriation attached to either one of these articles. An appropriation is where towns live and die in terms of a final statement. And that's important on a couple levels. I mean, you could have a warrant article next week that says, shall we preserve and maintain the town park? It's a political statement, which has had its effect, but, and the town cannot, the select board cannot modify, if it were to put these articles forward, it cannot modify them. So there's no opportunity for the town to clarify to the citizens that these are essentially advisory-in-nature articles. So there's part of the confusion as well, aside from the fact that putting them both forward and having them both pass does not, is a disservice, in my opinion, to the population, to the citizens. But getting back to where, what matters are appropriations. And in terms of the disenfranchisement comment, I appreciate that, and I think there's different ways to look at things, particularly when you've gone to the trouble of getting the signatures. But the disenfranchisement, that ping-pong effect that I was talking about, is alive and well in my analysis. And that is that the town has sought grants and matched those grants from both state and federal sources, and for fiscal years 19, 20, 21, and now coming up again. There is money appropriated in the budget related to this line, to the line items relating to the study of the watershed. Those are real votes going through the Budget Committee and then voted on by the people, those appropriations. So that is part of the analysis in terms of, is it appropriate for sort of a rifle-shot article that is advisory in nature to be put on the ballot in the context of that recent several-year history, in the middle of a process that, albeit is long and complicated, but is being, but it is evolving? And there will, of course, be final votes by the public on whatever recommendations come forward from the select board or from, and through their experts. On a more general level, it is sometimes frustrating to watch a process evolve in the sort of public forum, particularly if you have a strong view, and you might want to sort of circumvent that or stop it. And I see that more and more in different towns. It's very different than when I first started practicing, where people would allow a process to evolve and then vote on the ultimate issue. So there is that overlay as well, when what are advisory and more political statements are put forward in the midst of a process. That's also part of what the select board, I think, has within their discretion under the statute. The case law will talk about, talk about what happens when you have, generally speaking, a vocal minority who has a particular perspective on an issue. And that also is what is addressed in terms of this ping-pong effect. So agree or disagree with my recommendation, I certainly understand that, but I'm fairly confident, I am confident, that the select board has the discretion to either put these forward or not, with the history coming into tonight and what has happened in terms of prior appropriation votes. So that may or may not help, but I'm just trying to flesh out a little bit of some of the rationale that went into my thinking.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I have a question for Ray when he comes back up.
Ray, you stood up first, please, and Stephanie. Ray, Ray, no, Ray, please.
Well.
Two things, just, I've heard the comment, no decision's been made.
Sorry, Ray, can you?
Excuse me. I have heard the comment that no decision's been made about what's to be done with Montgomery Dam. However, when the select board held its workshop down at Harbor Park, the only images that were shown were of a future, of a future decision there, were of no dam. There were, the dam was gone. That was the images that were portrayed by this select board to the citizens of Camden. So that, in a way, says, this is the route we want to take.
I would take exception to that. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
Well, I'll take exception to that. And the other thing is, all right, put their petition on the November ballot and keep ours on June.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you very much.
Ray, I have a question.
Yeah, he had a question.
I have a question for you. The last time you were here, you were very complimentary of having a citizens advisory board.
Yes.
And that's why I thought we could do, is we could do that and get the information. Because I'll tell you right now, as, not as a select board person, because my vote won't, as a select board person, won't take the dam or down, or not take the dam, but my vote as a citizen, I'll have a chance to make a decision like everyone else in the town. And I don't know which way I would vote yet, because I haven't seen enough information to make that decision.
I think you've said that before.
I know, and I want to make it clear. So I'm wondering, why are you not interested in pursuing the citizens advisory committee, which you talked about and were complimentary of the last meeting, and postponing the vote till we can get more information?
Whether or not the Montgomery Dam is there, we're still in favor of citizens advisory committee on the whole river project.
Okay.
Okay? We, our group wants to preserve Montgomery Dam. We feel it's a integral part of the town of Camden.
Understood. Understood. Thank you, Ray. No, Sophie's, and Sophie's turn. I'm sorry. No, okay. Thank you, Ray.
No, I just, I just want to make a comment. I'm the junior member on this board, and the whole river project is extremely complicated and complex. And I, the way I look at it is a system, and when we address a system, there's a lot of different steps that need to be taken. And I don't think, as Allison clearly said, there's not, there's no there there yet. There's, nothing is happening right now. But the major point I want to make, I want to thank the people who have signed both petitions, because it's a number of people who have expressed an opinion that, to me, is really important to see the democracy live and well in Camden. And it puts a responsibility on me, because I can only speak for myself, and I'm hoping, I'm pretty sure on the rest of my colleagues, to really address this issue seriously, rigorously, transparently. And when there is something that we can all discuss and vote on, I think that's the best solution, that's the best way forward.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Stephanie Smith, 210 Washington. And I want to speak only for me, which is, I think the citizens advisory committee is the best move you can make next. I talked to many people who said, I need to learn a lot more, who are objective, who didn't know, and they need time to process it. So I'm highly in support of a group of citizens, including people who don't have made their mind up, who have not made their mind up yet, who are going to take in data, because this has gotten to be so, so much strong information that I think we need to do some things at town to diffuse it. And I think the citizens advisory committee could do that. And I appreciate the dilemma you're in. I've sat behind a table, and I know it's not an easy decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Tom.
Tom Resick, 67 Rossin. I'm not on either group, neither the Save the Dam or Restore the River. I do live on the river, so I care a lot about the issue, and especially as it pertains to the Tannery property, which, as, since the river is still being discussed, we'll just talk about that more later, but that's, you know, the river, the biggest, three acres of property on the river is part of a river study, I would say. So to have a, something we'll talk about later. But what I really wanted to say is, I have too many thoughts, too many thoughts.
You're doing well, though. I know the feeling.
Yeah. But I think it's a little disingenuous to wait till the last day, where the warrant is going to be approved tonight, to address either of the referendum issues. They put a lot of work into it. And the other issue, again, another thought, is, is our lawyer accessible to folks when they're drafting the referendum, a petition and referendum? To find out at the last minute that Bill has an opinion that is contrary to an opinion a group's own lawyer might have, I mean, that's a waste of time and energy for everybody. Shouldn't there be a way citizens can access Bill to find out if he has a problem with the referendum they are working on? And, like I said, to now deny these, possibly deny, you haven't done it yet, but possibly deny these referendums at the last minute, when they don't have a chance to garner more support? I mean, you could have done this weeks ago, as you were discussing this, but there's no chance to, to work to, against this opinion and do more work to maybe find reasons to present a lawyer on the other side. Again, I don't have an opinion of what should happen, but I think the process is really, could be improved a lot, because there are more referendums yet to come, and we could face this over and over again. So, yeah, I don't know why you waited till the last minute to address it.
But we're talking about state law here, Bill. Bill, we're talking about state law, right?
Yes, and it's a.
We're not talking about Camden's, we're talking about the state law that we're.
Yes, the state statutes apply. And just a brief comment, it's, it's a real slippery slope for me to get involved with drafting what someone intends when I represent the town, through the select board embodies it. Different intents, different approaches, it's, I don't want to be the arbiter, and I don't want to be the drafter of someone else's work. So I will say that, generally speaking, not generally, almost always, municipal attorneys have to keep a bit of a distance, because it's not my job to get politically involved on one issue or another, and this is a good example of where they're competing with each other. And I can't get in the middle of all that.
Agreed, agreed. Borderline conflict of interest, in fact. Other board comments?
Hand on the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ken has his hand up first.
There's a hand in the back of somebody that does never.
Tom, one second. I'm trying to get the individuals who are new first. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
My name is Jeff Wolovitz, Woodcrest Avenue. Tom, thanks for pointing out that if we're talking about the plan for the river, that the Tannery site is definitely having that as part of that plan for consideration. Seems like a great point. That's not the point I came up to make, though. First of all, I'm definitely out of my comfort zone here, and very green in this position. Bill, I did have a, and I have these concepts and thoughts floating around in my head, but also have a couple of questions as well. Bill, you had mentioned that an advisory warrant, a warrant could be an advisory, what's, can you explain that just a little bit more, and like, what would be a warrant that is not an advisory warrant?
I have to, the chair has to tell me if I'm allowed to answer.
Yes, you are, yes.
Thank you.
I got that part, but I was going to jump in anyway, but go ahead.
Do you want to?
No, no, you first.
The nature of an advisory warrant is that it's not legally binding. It's just a, it's a straw poll, it's a question of public opinion. And it's clearly stated, and it's printed on a separate ballot, and it's made clear to the person who's voting that there's no legal effect to, in terms of the outcome of the vote, on that advisory or straw poll type warrant article.
So it says it, that it is?
It says, big, bold letters at the top, it's a separate page that's required to say, and usually a separate color, in the ballot booth, to say that it's merely advisory, of no binding effect.
So for example, Article 16 is not an advisory, shall be sold to this individual. I know that, I know that's a separate agenda item.
I think.
I can think of a good example, like a good recent example. So when we had the open town meeting at the Snow Bowl to vote on the Siemens contract, the town was also asked to vote on a non-binding advisory article on whether or not the townspeople supported the mayor's climate council's recommendations, and they voted in favor of it. So it's really a statement of policy position and principle, and it has, like Bill's saying, no, no binding effect as to what the town.
Right, right. It's not an advisory warrant.
Well, just a more recent one, the straw poll advisory opinion on whether or not the town wished to move towards secret ballot voting for the budget.
Exactly. That's what I was going to mention.
So he's asking, an example of it that's not, that's not advisory, that's, that would be binding, you know, something that would say, the town needs to spend this much money on this.
So, yeah, anytime, like, when we vote on the budget, that's, that's binding.
Okay, so down, down the road, in terms of, in regards to this item, you had mentioned the town would be, have the opportunity to vote on the future of the dam or the watershed.
Yes.
Binding or advisory?
Well, when we get to a, when we get to a point, when we've completed the work we're trying to complete, we're going to put something on the ballot that's going to have some binding, it's going to have teeth to it. We're not there, we're not there yet. That's the whole point.
Because generally, there would be some amount of money tied to it. So it would be something like, you know, do, do you approve the town allocating $25,000, $100,000, however, you know, a certain amount of money as matching funds to this grant for this purpose, would be one example. We might not know exactly how it would look. Or it might be, do you support spending $200,000 to repoint the spillway on the dam? Or, so that when we ask people if they want to save the dam, they're also approving an amount of money to do what they're asking to do.
I think I understand. So I think I just have one more question.
Sure.
Related.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Make sure I frame it right. So before the town, before a decision is made to modify, or dispose of, or maintain an asset of the town that is enjoyed by all, it gets put to the people of the town to vote on whether to move forward with that decision, to maintain, or sell, or dispose of it?
It depends on.
Asset that is enjoyed by all the town people.
Well, you're talking qualitative measures, we're talking, binding has some quantitative aspect to it. It's, it's not whether or not you love or don't love something, it's about whether you want to spend a certain amount of money to maintain something.
Public space.
Whatever it is, of course, we don't deal with private space in the town.
Public space, I see.
I know, I said, we don't deal with private, of course. But to maintain something, there's going to be a budget associated with that. To remove something, replace it, there's a budget associated with that. If, so, yes, it's binding, and it's attached to, usually to, as Bill suggested, our role goes through dollars and budgets and spending the taxpayers' money for whatever we may be recommending. So to get into this debate about what's binding and not binding, it boils down to, really, it boils down to when there's something that the town, again, to Roger's point about when we had the meeting at the Snow Bowl on January 26th, I'm still thawing out from it, for the Siemens contract, they were approving, there was a proposal from that corporation to spend $2.3 million on energy improvement projects, which there was a list, and they were asked to, do you approve of that expenditure by the town? And how it was funded was also another element, it was, and they were all binding, all related to, it was very succinct decisions. None of them were qualitative, except for the referendum at the end, which was asking people, what do you think about, it's an advisory role? Again, the most recent one, repeating, is the, we recently had a charter commission that went through and changed some of our charter, and they didn't change anything with respect to how the budget was voted on by the town, but they recommended we ask a question, advisory only of the town, in the last ballot, whether or not they would consider, want a select board to pursue, looking at doing it a different way, as we've been doing it the last few years, and that passed overwhelmingly. And this year, the actual substantive word changes in the charter are on the ballot to do that, for the voters to consider. So we went from advisory to an actual amount of work that went on to determine what would be changed. In this case, it was not financial, it was changing the charter. It's, that is now on the ballot for the voters to decide in a binding warrant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could paint the Harbor Master Shack a different color.
Yeah, we can, yeah, that kind of, we can do that kind of thing. But I think, you know, Mark.
I, just one other point, and I want to make it clear that when Ray said that, there were no photos of, at the Harbor Park, there were no photos of the dam being preserved, you were correct. There were not. And I wanted to acknowledge that, that I recognize that, that's a good point.
You were there, in Harbor Park with the dam, I mean, you can see it.
All the proposals, all the photos were of changes that could be made, and I think it's important, he made a point, and I think it's important that you.
Now, I want to get into what with the Harbor Park, and the bottom line is this board has never contemplated or made any decision regarding any dam or any part of the river or any part of the feasibility studies to date. We are still working on it. We will continue to work on it. And I don't believe anything should get in the way of us doing what we were elected to do, and that is to give the people a thorough analysis of all options, bring it to the table with community, of course, input, to determine what is the best recommendation to put into a binding warrant vote at some point in time. That's the bottom line. No, I'm not going to keep repeating. Ken, one more time, because you guys handed up for an hour.
Thank you, Tom. That was well said. Appreciate that. We need to assert, we need to assert that we have the legal right to petition you. We have a right to expect that you will follow the law, and what you're doing now is probably not legal. We did have a legal, you have a legal opinion, we've got a legal opinion. If you had raised this issue when the language was first turned in back in November, we could have had our lawyer come talk to your lawyer and perhaps come to a lawyerly discussion. As it is now, you are about to break the law, and you don't have a right to do that.
Thank you, Ken.
You must.
Thank you.
You must conform to the expectations in the law.
Thank you very much. We, we have a legal opinion, and thank you for your statement, but I really need to move on with this. Do you have anything else you want to conclude with?
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Now is the time to set the design parameters. You keep going around that. But wouldn't it be helpful, here's a very important thing, why wait till November to nail this down? Nail it down now, and then you can move forward with all of your designs, all of your grant applications, all of your design parameters for your sketchers and your designers. Now is the time to make that decision.
Bill?
You should perhaps, no, I did discuss this with your lawyer.
Yeah, Ken, we've got to move on. Is there anything else that you want to state?
I just want to say, repeat what Tom said. Why did you wait till the last second? This is the last second. This feels underhanded. It feels slimy, and I do resent it. I think the people of Camden deserve better.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
No, no. Young lady here, she hasn't spoken before.
Hi, Jennifer Healy, Camden resident. I just, I know this is all about money, but, and I know you don't like emotion and when things like that come into it, when it comes to something like the dam and decisions and things like that. But it definitely feels to me, it's just sad, that it feels as though you're kicking the can down the road because you, you didn't get what you wanted with the Interfluv report. You had different decisions and things that were presented. You didn't get the support that you thought you would as readily and as strongly. So now it's like, well, let's, let's have another report. Let's, let's get an advisory committee. Let's get people together. You've had people who have come together here before you for months and months and months. Do you think any one of these people here are ever going to be on your advisory committee? Think about that. I don't know. My guess is no. You have concerned citizens in front of you all the time.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't, but you don't necessarily want to hear or see. You don't, so to me, it's, it's just shocking to me, quite frankly, what, what you've decided. There's a very old and wise thing, and it is, if not now, when? I'm sure you've heard of it. I'll be through in just a minute.
Sure, sure.
And I just feel as though if you don't do the right thing now, which means to let the citizens go to make a vote, take a vote on June 14th, then, then when will you ever do the right thing? Because you're not, you're not doing the right thing. So if not now, when? Make, make this decision, a wise decision, and one that's correct for the citizens, and then you will know better where we stand, who you're supposed to represent.
Thank you. I think there's one important thing to make clear in your statement. We've had one feasibility report, that's what it is. It's a feasibility report saying that these are some options you should pursue, recommendations of what options you should look at, and we are, and have been in the process of doing just that. There is not any intent to develop a new report or something different. We're just, as I said earlier, we're gathering information, which creates knowledge to allow us to make an informed decision. Disrupting that process, we've certainly listened, and we'll continue to listen to the many who have their hearts and souls in any part of this town, not just the Montgomery Dam, as many parts of this town where there's historic interest, where there's emotional attachment. We get it, we get it. We're listening, but we also need to do our job. That's what you voted for us for, to do our job, to provide the public with information, with pros and cons of each option, so an informed decision can be made eventually in the ballot box. That's true. It's no more complicated than that. It's really very, very simple. So with, Ray, yeah, Ray, yeah, then we'll have to revert to-
Just two very quick questions, Bill. First, are the petitions that everybody signed, are they valid through November and into next year? Or do we have to go out and get new petitions?
Bill, go ahead. If you can answer that. All right.
Under the timeframes, I believe you'd have to get new petitions.
So basically saying, okay, all right, yeah.
The idea is that we would craft a question that is somewhat of a combination of those with a dollar amount and more specifics. So neither of the, the language of both of those petitions doesn't tell, doesn't give voters the full opportunity to weigh in. So hopefully after Citizens Advisory Committee that has really fleshed out what the appropriate question is to ask, and we understand all of the options, then a better question can be crafted that can be put to everybody. That's the-
Citizens Advisory Committee better not be one-sided.
Well, they're not going to get into that.
The other question I have, okay, is can you provide us with the state statutes and everything that you were citing for your decision? Because you know, we don't.
It's Title 38, Section 2521 and 2522.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Well, yeah, we, Mark, go ahead.
One last question, and I hate to bring it up, but Bill, what if we allow both of these to go forward? What happens?
Were you here for the earlier part of the meeting?
Yeah, they're advisory only.
They, they don't say that, which is part of my comment, in terms of the confusion they create, because people will not, I think, understand whether-
Louder, Bill. Just got in skin, was questioning, couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I don't know how else to address this other than what I've already said before. You all, as a select board, get to decide that right now. I've only given you my recommendation.
Right, okay.
Can I just say something real quick?
No, Tom, we're going to, we have to move, all right, Gary, go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Our lawyer has a background in municipal law, and we worked with him, and he drafted this, wrote it. And I disagree, it's not a statement. Our article is not a statement. I just want to make that clear. It's just your opinion. But I just needed to say-
All right, all right, Tom, thank you very much. We really need to move on. I'm sorry, what? Oh, please. A new face.
Not completely. Jean Brewer, I just want to say that you have really taken the wind out of my sails about democracy tonight. At a time when the world is in such a mess, and things like this are happening right here in our small town, where you won't even let the people have a say, it is really very disheartening. And I don't feel like you're acting in good faith. I don't feel like I can trust any one of you. Truly. I thought we had a real process here, a democratic process, but it doesn't feel like that at all. It comes down to an attorney's advice about something that people have spoken about. They've spoken loudly about on both sides. And this is just really, really heartbreaking. We have enough problems in the world, and we can't settle this here in Camden. The people own the dam. They have a right to say something about it. And if they do it first, and it doesn't, and, and people say they don't want it, then you move forward. That's the first step in dam removal, is to have permission from the people, not from just you, from the people.
Mm-hmm, agree.
And I just had to say this because I can't believe that this is really happening in our little town. I've been here 30 years, and I've seen some things go on, but I haven't gotten involved because I trusted people. I no longer do. I no longer trust any of you. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for not clapping, Ray. We have to move forward with this. I'm sorry.
Somebody, I mean, I-
Please.
I tried to, if you could raise your hands, I haven't spoken-
I know, but one last shot, if you'd like to make a statement, sure.
Jeff Pittman from here in Camden. So, I've been following this whole dam business kind of through the papers and through the general stuff for a while here. And I personally feel that in some ways, there is a rush to try to ram something through. And I really appreciate the effort by all of the people and the petition makers, because it is the democratic process. But I do very much feel that in this process here, as a voter, as a town resident, I want to know more. I want to have more concrete details. And to try to rush at this point to meet a deadline in June seems like somebody's trying to get something under the table. And I don't like it. I would like to see this go to November. I would like to see it go into next year if it has to, because I personally would really like to know all the options, all the ins and outs, and I'd like to see a list of figures. Nobody's talked a single thing about how much it's going to cost us to do any of the options. And I think, I think it would serve the people of the town better in the democratic process to take some time and not rush. Because really, I think all of us work together, we could come up with a really good solution. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was so nice. Yeah, thank you. I do think that the see of the dam petition has been a very good thing in many ways, because it, nobody in Camden really can say that they don't know this conversation is occurring. And it happened for a while, that it was a little bit under the radar, and it's hard to get people's attention, and now it really woke everybody up. And we're all talking about it. And I, I do think that the more we talk about it, the, we probably can come up with some solutions here in Camden that haven't been thought of in other places. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do something that's actually better than what's been done in other places and makes more people happy. So, I mean, if there were only one petition, it would be very easy, a very easy decision. I would, I would, in a lot of ways, would be happy to just get it over with and let people vote. If there were one petition, I would say absolutely, this is going to put, you know, even though I don't necessarily like the way it's worded or something, I would say, put it out to voters to save the, you know, to preserve and protect the dam, and, and then let the other side vote, you know, rally for a no vote if they want. But it's because there's another group that, that rallied and talked to a lot of people. There are a lot of people that want more conversation as well. And so there's no, there's no way to choose something here that makes everybody happy. There's one group that doesn't want to discuss any, you know, certain option any further, and then there's another group that wants to discuss all the options further, and-
I would agree, I'd agree.
I think, I agree with you, Allison. Thank you. I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Yes, please do.
So I'm going to make a motion that the select board, and Bill, maybe I need your help phrasing this correctly, but to follow Bob, Bill's recommendation to not put any of those two petitions on the June 14 warrant.
Can, we're in the process right now, we'll have a discussion in a minute. Do I have a second for the motion? Shut off public discussion?
Give me a minute, please. Do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Now discussion by the board. Ken, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah, let Ken make a comment, and then I'll-
We, we don't know what the result of the vote on June 14th would be, and you don't either. But why don't you trust the voters? Put it on the ballot, let's find out. Trust the process.
Thank you, Ken.
Many people would actually look at those, those two questions, I believe, and because they're both on there, would assume that both could be vote, that both could be yeses simultaneously.
Yeah.
That's what, most of the time, people assume that anything that is on the ballot, you can vote yes to everything without them canceling each other out. And so that's, that's the real danger here in confusing people and having them read those two things. And I think a lot of people in Camden would read those two things and think, oh, they wouldn't get hyper-focused on the name of a specific dam necessarily. They might not know that part, but they might think, oh, it sounds good to restore the river. Oh, it sounds good to preserve history. And they might, they would, they would think that both of those, those petitions or both of those questions could be yeses simultaneously, and-
Right. I think a lot of, I think we've kind of discussed this infinitum. Are there any discussion from the board?
The one thing I'll say is, the way I feel about this is, I have a similar feeling and I vote in a similar direction when we come to the Tannery proposal. And I'll talk about it when we get to that proposal. But it's, same feeling about both of them.
Board vote halls in favor of the motion? Four to zero. Thank you very much. And closing on this, we know this is a tough one, but I can assure you that this is not an intent to do this at the last minute. We have to go, it takes time to get legal evaluations. It takes time for us to get things to agenda. We are, got a lot of stuff going on. There's no, there's been no attempt to sandbag anybody. This is not going to change anything. We're going to continue to evaluate and involve y'all on both sides on providing information till we get to a point where, and by the way, it'll never get to a point where everybody in the town agrees on one item. Don't believe it. If there is not one issue that this select board, since I've been on it now over five years, that we haven't had opposition to some degree on. So, keep that in mind. We understand that. And the opposition can, we can't measure it. It could be five, 500, we don't know. But our job, and bottom line, and we must, and staunch on maintaining that our job, is the development of information. And we're going to do that in the feasibility report. That's all it is. We're going to develop designs of various options, absolutely. Because how can you evaluate the options if you don't have each option analyzed completely? And it isn't just financial, by the way, not even close. We're in that process. I don't know how long it's going to take to, the young man in the back who made that comment, I don't know if it'll be November. I'm not going to project. It's going to be when it's ready, and that's what we're going to do. So with that, enough speeches by me, you don't need to hear me anymore. We want to move on to item, let's see, 4B, which is the approval of town meeting warrant for June 14, 2022. And that warrant-
I think a lot of people are going to leave.
Okay, sure. While they're leaving, that warrant is in our packet as drafted. And to Jeremy's point he made earlier, just so we don't forget, that the warrant article, let me get to it, please. Whoops, I screwed up. A lot of paper in here.
It's a loan.
Which article is the-
What are we looking at?
Moratorium. Oh, the moratorium, Article 11, we have already modified that one per our previous discussion. Do we need to detail that anymore, Bill, or?
We voted on it.
We already, this is about changing to one date, March 15th, and not having two dates. So I presume that information, do we have enough to-
Yeah, and, and the sentence before, so the effective date and date of applicability for the outer and coastal harbor.
Yes.
Shall be March 15, 2022. And then we get rid of the-
March 24th.
That's period, and then, yeah. That's period, and then, yeah.
Okay. All right, cool. So is that correct, Jeremy? Does that cover your, your question?
It does.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jeremy, do you have a comment? No, you didn't.
That's it.
He's leaving.
He's calling a kid. He's calling a kid.
He's done.
Running away.
He's running away.
In our last meeting, we discussed, I think, all of the articles, unless anybody has any questions on one through, let me get the right numbers.
21.
I will say, Article 7, the Planning Board recommends this, this version has a zero, zero, it's five to zero, so I'm going to fix that.
There's a five, okay, yeah. Thank you.
Oh, the Planning Board recommends five, zero, I see it. The five is missing.
The five is missing.
So that, nine, this is all the articles on the moratorium.
It looks like maybe there are some that don't have the, the note.
Yeah.
Oh, I was, I wasn't going to say that, but that's probably also true. But there's, the Select Board recommendation, is there?
There's no also recommendation for the budget, there's no vote.
Allison, you're referring after Article 12 and all that?
Oh, the whole budget.
Article 12 and after.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I didn't look at those.
Well, I mean, we can probably.
Most of those, I don't think we ever do explanations on those. Janice would know, I think.
I wasn't actually saying the explanations, but for, you know, for instance, the Select Board, you know, what the Select Board vote was for each of them, you know, specifically, I would be, you know, part of me wants to just leave that off for the tannery one and, but I don't, I don't know.
I think we should put it for every.
Unless it's, you know, unless there's a specific reason to try to say, all we want is to ask voters, and we don't want to give any recommendation. That feels a little bit like a cop-out, but.
Got to be consistent. We either put it on everyone, or we take it off everyone, otherwise.
It should be on everyone.
I think it should be on everyone.
Because people are going to wonder why not.
Yeah, right.
And I think it's just because they're voted on every year at the town meeting, we just didn't think about putting it on.
Let me, and we know we're going to discuss the Article 16, let me see, oh, sorry, 15, 16, and 17, which are related to the tannery. So are there any, are there any of those remaining articles that the board would like to discuss, and otherwise we can just take it at four to zero?
I think 21.
Oh, 21?
21 is the budget.
Yes.
And the last time the public saw this draft, the Select Board's budget was not on there.
Yes.
So I just, I think, you know, first of all, to add the vote between the, the budget committee and the Select Board, but it's also to understand that because of the process, the budget committee looks at a budget that is less complete than what we look at because we have a more.
Yes.
Complete picture. And that explains the difference. It doesn't mean that the Select Board disagrees with what the budget committee has worked on. It just means that we're working on a different set of information. That's why there's a difference in the, the amount.
Yeah, this is a good point, so we just, public to understand that the differences between the budget committee and the Select Board were virtually zero. But what occurred was between the budget committee meetings and our meeting on April, not August 19th, we, we, we had some information on a couple of items that changed and increased a couple of items, and that's when we, that's what we approved. Those are the only differences between them. And they really relate to, as you can see, the general government area was the, was the, and the debt capital contingency line items, but that's correct.
But the way it's worded, it really, it kind of presents it as, as if it's an actual substantive disagreement in spending.
That's one of the, one of the, that's one of the issues I have with, with having them both on, is there's no mechanism to explain the differences unless we do what we're doing right now.
That's why I wanted to point it out, to make it part of the record that.
Yeah, right.
This is the reason why.
Right.
It's not a disagreement, it's not.
Do you have a, a budget comment?
We're not disavowing the budget committee.
Then I still, we can still choose.
That's what we like.
Took a copy of this this morning, had a lot of different suggestions as far as editing, a couple of changes in there, about the five and zero and stuff like that. But on this Article 21, on the budget. Yeah. Okay, as I read this as a voter going in there. Yeah. The Select Board is recommending the lower budget to be passed, correct?
No, you're voting on the Select Board's budget.
It's $10,418,000 for the budget committee, $10,481,000.
He's right, there's an issue.
So which one is the recommending?
Yeah, no, thank you, Ray. Thank you very much. The, it should read, and it's, it's tricky because it's a, it's.
Down below, it's correct, but up above, it's, I know down below, it's incorrect as well.
Oh, yeah.
The town should appropriate $10,481,653,000. That needs to be changed, because right now, it's only the budget committee's amount. Ray, thank you so much.
That's a big one.
I really appreciate it.
You're in a report for GE, so I know what to look for.
The sentence says, the budget committee recommends an amount of.
No, the top one.
Look at the top one.
Oh, oh, great.
Let me.
To fix that.
Ends tonight.
Going to get an award.
That's, that's a big, that's a big deal, actually.
We're going to make a, do we need to make a motion to change this article?
No, no, you don't have to.
Can we make sure to change?
Yeah. How do we nicely ask that it be changed?
I'm going to repeat it again, just to make sure we're all clear. Article 21 should state, shall the town vote to appropriate $10,481,653,000, which is the amount of the Select Board, it's the amount the Select Board recommends. So that needs to be changed.
To $10,481,653,000.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you. I had a lot of other little, I'm not going to go through them, little other editing things that you might want to consider. Unless it's substantive, Ray. But one substantive thing is that, and let me get the.
You're trying to spot on the budget committee for next year.
On Article 12. Yes. Yes. A suggestion, okay? You should put the years in after the dates that the taxes are due, otherwise someone can claim, well, you didn't specify what year you want the money. So it should be 13, 15, 2022, and then 2023. Otherwise, I can come in and say, hey.
It's only an, it's.
Try.
It's an annual warrant article, it only applies for the.
Okay, all right.
June 14th.
It applies to 2022, Ray. Okay, fine.
But it couldn't hurt to add that for next time.
Third one is a question on number 17.
Yeah.
Okay? And I don't understand what the last phrase there means, vote of town meetings. What are the meetings that you're talking about?
So every year since the June 10, 2008 meeting, that same language was included in a warrant article that referred back to that particular vote.
Okay.
The meetings thing, though, is just constantly confusing to people, because what we really mean there is, you know, any form of the citizens voting. And to the, any normal person, that means town meeting is like what we're doing right now, kind of, so.
Those are really the substantive things I found, there's a lot of little editing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. So what I would propose, the, the board, that there's a, on all the articles, excluding at the moment 16, 17, I'm sorry, 15, 16, and 17, that we all agree with the wording as modified recently discussed, there will be four, zero, zero by the Select.
Can I, can I add, there's two that you shouldn't do that on, and that's one and two.
Point. Okay, so.
Hold on, what's on, whatever.
It's elected moderators for society at meetings.
And the election of.
And election officials, yeah, that's, that's, so, yes.
Oh, yeah, we look a little silly.
Articles, Articles 3 through, let me see, no, let me put this way.
3 for 14?
Yeah, 3 through 14.
18 through 21.
18 through 21 are four, zero. So with that, there's no changes to those, other than the ones we've already discussed, thanks to Mr. Ray. Then we can move forward to discussion on the items we still have had discussion on. I know people want to discuss, which is 15, 16, and 17. Mr., you want to jump up, you want me to even say welcome or anything? Come on. Steve, go ahead.
President, too many hours in a cramped engine today.
I understand how that goes. Steve Gold, Grove Street. I'd like to point out that at your March 21 meeting, Mark stated that he was against Articles 15, 16, and 17, because it is not what we told the people. I appreciate that integrity. However, it is not only what you told us, but what voters demanded by voting to require a town meeting vote for any sale of the tannery property for the last seven years. Taking that requirement out of the proposed Article 15, where it has always been, produces two significant consequences. First, it relieves you of having to consider any of the requirements of the 2008 Tannery Advisory Group, or even consideration of the Tannery Work Group Report. Essentially, you are willing to dismiss the incredible amount of effort done by so many citizens over the years. Even Audra said at your January 18, 2022 meeting, and I quote, she supports the 2008 material, and how can you ignore voters' years of preference? Second, you eliminate the right of the community to approve the sale of the tannery by a vote of town meeting. Besides being supported by years of town meeting votes, it is enshrined in every piece of information the town has published, including the town website, the CDC report, select persons' comments, and even in the requests or proposals from which you are working. That, that request states, and I quote, interested parties should note that all proposals will be reviewed in public, and community support via a town meeting vote is required to move the proposal forward. Article 16 is a complete rejection of everything that has gone on before about the tannery. It grants the Select Board the right to enter into and execute a purchase and sale agreement for the tannery property. It doesn't reference a specific purchase and sale agreement, nor does it even say who the buyer will be, nor does it specify when this will happen. You are asking us to vote on the unknown. At your January 18, 2022 meeting, you authorized Audra to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with Crane Support and get back to you. Understandably, we know that's a very difficult issue, and it hasn't been done yet. I urge you and all the towns' voters to watch that meeting on YouTube. Several members, Ann and Audra, insisted that only a specific purchase and sale with all details nailed down, this quote from Audra, should be on the warrant. This discussion was summed up by Bob's comment, quote, "We must have a specific agreement, not permission to negotiate." I could repeat that one. We should have a specific agreement, not permission to negotiate. I agree. I respectfully request that you return Article 15 to its traditional language and delete the proposed Articles 16 and 17 from this year's warrant. The decision to sell or not to sell the tannery should be made by the community in the open forum of our traditional town meeting, not behind closed doors at an executive session of the Select Board. That's the end of my prepared comments, but something I'd like to add, and especially direct to Sophie, was your comments only 20 minutes ago about democracy and transparency. The proposed 16 and 17 and 15 completely void that concept.
I, I, I'm confused, but you're talking about making decisions in executive session. What is that referring to?
Well, for example, where did these warrant articles come from? I never saw anything in a public meeting that spelled out 16, 17, and 15.
You mean like the last meeting we had?
Last meeting you had, you read them to us.
Yeah.
But where was the debate about how they originated?
I mean, I think we tasked Audra with getting as far as she could, and she came back to us with this. Basically, we're either not going to put anything out to voters, or we're going to put something out that doesn't nail down every detail, because in order to keep going forward with this, in order for it to possibly succeed, it's going to need a little bit of a different process. If voters, voters want us to do that, if voters want us to do that, we will. We're not going to do it anymore without voters saying that they want us to take that step, which is why we're putting it on the ballot to ask.
You don't have to go any further until you get a specific purchase and sale agreement that Audra is trying to produce. And there's another aspect of this. If Article 16 passed, okay, it doesn't guarantee that you will ever come to a PNS with Crane Support.
Right.
And if you don't, Article 17 is moot, and we are left without the protection of that there has to be a town vote.
No, the whole purpose of Article 17 is that if, if it does pass and they aren't able to reach an agreement, it reverts back to what Article 15.
I'm sure it says that, doesn't it just say if they, if it passes?
No, it says if it, if it passes and they aren't, yeah, and it's failed to be, then it reverts back to.
That does not change my feeling.
Sure.
About these articles.
Sure.
And how the town should have the right to vote.
Okay. I think there's just a little confusion about the term town meeting. I keep hearing this, we've had it over and over again. Maybe a quick explanation again for the public that town meeting refers to.
So there, town, you can think of town meeting two ways, because Camden's traditionally had a bifurcated town meeting. So there's the first day of town meeting, which is the secret ballot voting. So we, you know, traditionally, it was ordinance amendments, and that's when you vote on who you want your elected officials to be. And then in the past, it was, open town meeting was what everybody considered town meeting up in the Opera House, you know, voting on these sort of, you know, housekeeping warrant articles, as well as the budget, and, you know, sometimes there are other issues that were more substantive that came to open town meeting. But after getting the feedback and the charter commission's work and all of that, what town meeting is likely going to be moving forward in the town of Camden is that day when you do the ballot voting.
I agree.
And, and that's perfectly fine. You're going to have your opportunity to vote that concept down, and.
When you have a written ballot.
Steve, Steve, you're going to have to stand up here, I'm sorry. One of the great traditions of our democracy is the ability to amend a warrant article. That's traditionally done at the traditional town meeting in the Opera House. How you would do that on a written ballot is unknown.
But when we asked Camden voters whether they wanted to continue with the process of going to the Opera House and all being there and voting like that, no, we asked them. We said, would you like to do, keep doing that, or?
That was about the budget.
That, I agree. I think it was.
Only about the budget.
We have never, there's, every year, it is discretionary and always has been, which things are going to be put on the town meeting format, or, or the open town meeting format, or on the secret ballot. Every year, the Select Board would say, are we putting this?
Since I've been here last century, you know, I don't recall not having an Opera House town meeting.
We always have had the Opera House town meeting, but we haven't, what specifically was voted on there was.
I would like to point out that the business, I call it the codicil, about not being able to sell the tannery property without a vote at town meeting, was an amendment.
I, I know, you are very, very skilled at it, Steve. Not everybody enjoys that process. I like it, too, because I'm not afraid of confrontation, I enjoy this robust debate, and you are very good at it, and, and you can do it well, also. But many people in town feel very overwhelmed by that system, where you're getting up and speaking in public and arguing and voting in public, and they don't feel they can be at their best, and they don't appreciate being told they have to show up at a specific time, they like to be able to vote privately. And it's taken me quite a bit to get to the point where I could accept that the way that I like to do things, the way that was, you know, beneficial for me to get my point across, isn't working. isn't working for the majority of Camden residents. So--
Yeah. Mark, who here?
I have to say, I agreed that the referendum was only about the budget. It was not about canceling the Wednesday town meeting. And that was my understanding. So I'm a little confused about this.
Yeah, let's knock it off.
We can still vote on interest rates at the annual town meeting--
Fundamentally, it was the-- the town meeting can refer to more than one type of meeting. There are two types. So that's just the way it's defined in the town management-- town meeting form of government. But yes, it has been historical. You're right, Steve. Historically, you're correct. It has been done in an open town meeting in which we were lucky to recruit 65 people to come to an open town meeting to decide all of the things that were important to the town. In my opinion, that's not democracy. I'm sorry. I'm speaking now-- Well, you may have seen it on occasion--
Those damn things got on the ballot. How many people do you think would be--
Would you allow me to finish?
Sure.
In my tenure in this town, which is 15 years, I have never seen more than 65 people in that meeting. And making-- Well, I know there have been--
You're making five, right? There were all kinds of people.
To me, the democratic process is to get it to 3,000 voters to make a decision. That's democracy. That's democracy in action today. So you may disagree. I get it. You can disagree. I get it. And it's okay to disagree.
Can I go to the microphone?
No, no. We have other people that would like to speak, Steve, so I'm going to try to go around a little bit. But there's a couple of clarifications I want to make, but I want to hear more comments first. I think, Tom, you had your hand up.
Bill has been--
Oh, okay. Bill, did you want to preempt or--
Well, just so the point isn't lost, in the great tradition of Maine, actually, you're not supposed to make substantive amendments to warrant articles. And the general commentary is that if a person reads the warrant, they know what it says, they're okay with it, they don't want to vote, they can go fishing. Sometimes warrant articles are amended as long as they're not substantively being changed. But the process of notice and the drafting of the warrant article is intended to preclude substantive amendments except for appropriation articles, and that depends on how they're worded. So I didn't want to be silent on that, just to say that.
Thank you.
So that's a place saver for later.
All right. Mr. Tom.
Tom Resick, 67 Rossin, speaking in regards to Article 15 and 16. Article 16-- well, first of all, I'd like to-- I agree with everything Steve said very strongly. And I do think if you don't follow what was promised, it's a grievous error. Anyway, to get to particulars, Article 16 does not offer the voters any timeline. In addition to not offering it a sales agreement, even-- it doesn't offer many other features that would be in a sales agreement. And it's leaving everything up to five people. Come June, it'll be five people. And some of those things-- one of those things is our timeline regarding completion of the proposed features of the Crane's Port proposal. I mean, it's not-- we don't know at all by giving you guys the say what it is you might do, what Mullins might agree to. Articles in 15 and 16 are asking the voters to trust the details of a sales agreement that does not yet exist. We're trusting that to five people in the community on an issue that's been out there for over eight years. It's been promised for the last seven years that the voters would be given a final vote on a completed sales agreement. It was promised just a few Select Board meetings ago as well. Not a general concept with no agreed-- no agreement on details or covenants. Jeremy, with the RFP, kept reinstating this RFP process, would have covenants attached to it. And it's in the RFP that covenants would be attached. There's so many unanswered questions and so far, broken promises. How would this project be phased? How long would construction continue? How would the farmers market, even though there's a mention of a farmers market there? How would that go on during construction? How long-- what if-- so far, there's been an EPA grant that hasn't been acted on? What if more toxic chemicals are discovered on the site through excavation after a sales agreement is done? It's not just a matter for the new owner. It's a matter of the people that are going to be walking on that property and the ability of a single individual to take care of something that a town should be taking care of. I mean, what covenants would be part of this sales agreement that would protect the property from being resold at a later date for some unspecified use other than those uses specified in the Crane's Port proposal? In a way, this issue has already been revealed. And I mean, the Select Board has months to negotiate this with Michael Mullins-- Audra, I mean-- has had months to negotiate regarding his Crane's Port proposal. Mullins-- Michael Mullins has already stated in a letter in the public record that the ability for the property to be sold at some point for a use other than what is proposed in his Crane's Port plan would need to be an essential part of a final sales agreement. So he's already spoken that he's not going to agree to a covenant that says he can't resell it or change the purpose. I mean, that's valuable information. Why continue with this when he's already stated he's not going to agree to something that has covenants? Why is the Select Board so eager to sell such a valued piece of community property situated on the McGunta Cook River, a river whose plan we're working on for-- that you keep talking about, we're working on this plan? Shouldn't come to any decisions about the dam because we're working on this plan, but you want to sell three acres that are on the river?
There's an easement that protects the riverfront forever. Sorry.
It doesn't prevent the three acres that are on the river. You're selling it to a private individual rather than keep and improve it for the good of the entire community. Tannery Park has already proved its value as a home to the Camden Farmers Market. It is constantly used as a community meeting place, a Bicycle Skills Playground, a neighborhood family play area. Tannery Park is the best location in Camden to access the McGunta Cook River and the scenic River Walk that creates its boundary. It's especially ironic that the Select Board is attempting to sell this property through the same town meeting vote where it is supporting Articles for additional McGunta Cook River restoration and harbor preservation via the pier moratorium. The voters should be given a clear choice. Do they want this popular public property to be owned by the community as a public asset for all the many public uses it has already provided and continue to provide in the future? Or do they want to sell it and leave it in the hands of a private individual for an uncertain promise of a glorified industrial park that could be sold or repurposed to some unknown future owner for an unknown use? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Bill, did you want to make a comment on any of those points? Or should we just-- Okay, thank you.
A letter, too, that somebody should read.
Okay. Yes, please.
Well, he's walking up. I'm going to take a break. I'll be right back.
Take your time. Walk slower.
See, I'm going to go get a drink of water if I can.
Should I wait for him?
Let's wait two minutes. I don't want him to miss it.
I'm Bob Gassid. I live on 20 Thomas Street.
Go get water really quick.
Just-- Wait, take a break. Just if you-- maybe you'd like to sing--
I thought you were going to wait. That's why I jumped out.
Go ahead.
If you'd like to sing a song or something, please, real quick.
No. I could kill you. Whatever.
That's fine. Now, I want everybody here, please.
Yeah, sure.
Get one back.
Thanks, sorry.
No problem. Please introduce yourself again if you don't mind.
Bob Gassid. I live on 20 Thomas Street. I've been involved with the Riverwalk quite a lot in this--
Your microphone is kind of-- Thanks, Tom.
Should I start over?
No.
Probably okay.
You're fine.
I care about the park, and I've been involved with the Riverwalk. And here we are. I was curious that somebody said that you folks wanted to take down the dam, and you were, "No, no, no, no. We're in the process of gathering information and stuff, and that's what we do, and that's what we're supposed to do." So how would you answer if I said you want to sell this tannery park to Crane's Port? That's what you want to do?
Go ahead, Ellison.
Oh, really? I wasn't thinking you were going to--
Tell them the last three-year story.
Oh, no. I was just going to say, me personally, I don't want to. I am personally excited about the idea of rolling that whole thing into the river study. I think that it's a historic floodplain that used to be part of the McGunta Cook River Valley and helped to absorb stormwater. And we filled it in with a bunch of fill and contaminated it over the years. And in my mind, the most amazing thing to do would be if there were unlimited funds-- and who knows, maybe there will be-- would be to turn it into some kind of stormwater retention park that expanded the banks just a little bit, retained a lot of park-like features. I think there's really cool stuff that could be done, and that's my own personal excitement. I don't feel comfortable advocating for that at this point because of the history of town planning that I've seen happen since I was really young. And I've seen people vote on wanting some kind of economic development there. We're still paying off the loan for when, you know, when we agreed-- the town agreed to take it on, sort of with the idea that it was going to be an economically viable investment. But I'd like to know from voters now if there's a different feeling about what they want to do. I think if a Michael Mullins-type proposal had come along 15 years ago, the town would have said, "Awesome." They would have laughed all the way to the bank, $250,000. They would have said, "Great." I don't know if that's the case now. And to me, there would be nothing more clarifying and sort of an opportunity to give us permission to move forward in a different way. If people were to vote "no" on this, that would make it clear that we were released from those years of town planning that had happened before that led us down this sort of economic development model. I think there's a good chance that people will vote "no." If people vote "yes," depending on the margin and what I hear from people and, you know, all of the conversations that happen, it would take-- I would negotiate very, very hard for some kind-- for an expanded easement, for more green space, for some kind of retention of more public area. That's my own personal thing that it doesn't make sense to get mired in right now. But to say that the Select Board just wants to sell it-- no, I hope there's a grant out there that could help us fund the whole thing to do something really beneficial environmentally. But that's-- I want to ask the voters what they want to do.
But why wouldn't-- you're gathering information for the dam. Are you-- why aren't you gathering information for this? You're trying to sell it.
Can I--
I'm not trying to--
Can I speak?
No, I'm not.
Be careful. There's a lot of history here. You probably-- you know, you know that.
Yeah.
But not the-- the most recent history was the Select Boards-- Select Boards in the recent past making a decision to grow RFPs for uses for the tannery. We went through that last year. And that was a huge evaluation of various proposals, three or four, I forget the exact number, but, you know, proposals for various types of uses. Went through an evaluation, went through-- see that committee evaluating the proposals and bringing a recommendation back to the board. The board started on the path of actually proposing Crane's Port. Unfortunately, we made it too complicated because of trying to combine housing and the other part. Long story, but it made-- it's just impossible to get it done. We reverted back-- revisited that this year and brought the same decision to the board to make a decision whether or not we want to sell this to Crane's Port. And they voted "yes." And so we voted to-- well, not voted to. We didn't vote to. But-- and that's where this warrant came from. This is-- to Ellison's point, this is asking the public per requirements if they want to sell it to this entity or not. It's a very, very common process we use for everything in this town, every contract we do. This is one sole exception where by charter, the town-- we all know this-- the town can dispose of tax-acquired property without going to public vote. But this is one where we're required to because of the many years of agreement to do so. But we definitely need to go to vote to-- and that's what we're proposing here, to Ellison's point. I-- it's great litmus to ask for the interest in what the town is today. Also, to-- I want to be clear and to-- just for everybody to understand, this process we are involved in right now-- again, I'm going to say it again-- is no different than we do for every contract we've done. For example, the Siemens Project, which was, I mentioned, a $2.3 million For example, the Siemens project, which was, I mentioned, a $2.3 million town meeting we had for that a year and a half ago. And in that meeting, like we oftentimes do, we ask for the town voters to approve for the select board to negotiate and enter into an agreement with that entity. Now, that is not done, and that's why I asked Steve the question about executive session, I didn't know where that was coming from. Because whenever, hopefully very soon, the PNS or the agreement is finished, the select board is an entity, it is not a person. It, three of the five of us has to vote in favor of that. And we cannot vote in any form except a public session. That, I want to make that very clear to everybody, this is not about, because I'm afraid some people are using terminology that makes people think, "We're gonna go cut a deal and not tell the public about it." I'm sorry, that ain't true. That ain't true.
That would require a level of coordination that even the law doesn't allow us to have, so, no, yeah, thank you, Bob.
You guys are taking all my time here.
You have more, go ahead.
The difference in the process is that you guys bypassed the process that was in place, which was like nine years of committees leading to the tannery work group, and that was a done deal. Everybody liked it. That was the time where we had reached what I felt like was the conclusion of a very difficult road. This introduction of RFPs was like a complete violation of where we had gotten to.
Okay, thank you.
And I say "we," and I'm talking about the neighborhood, the community, the town.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and so, I just, you know, Tom and Steve said it, the same thing I'm gonna say is that you bypassed, now you're trying to bypass our right to vote on the property.
Aren't you gonna vote "no"? Are you gonna tell people to vote "no" on this?
No.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Let it finish. What, the point is, the point is, it's going on the ballot, people who agree with you, and by the way, they bring me a lot, are gonna vote "no." They are voting on it.
Yeah, but why are you testing that theory? Why don't you just go around and get some consensus? You're gathering information for the dam, here you are gonna sell the property.
Again, you're ignoring, I'm sorry, but you're ignoring the process we went through in the last year and a half to go through proposals. I honestly don't remember you coming to those meetings.
Oh, yeah.
But we went through that whole process, we came to a recommendation of the board that was going to go into a PNS, we hit a bump, otherwise we were going to vote with the package for the voters last year for Crane's Park, a little modified, I agree, was, you know, had some housing in it. So, you know, this is not bypassing anything, we've been doing this all in public for at least two years. So, you know, the bottom line is the voters have a chance to vote or not on this potential use of the, as they do on every other thing we put.
I thought you was talking about taking that away.
No, no, no.
Okay, wait, I want a chance to talk. I agree. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I talked earlier, when we were talking about the dams, I said I wanted to address the dam vote and this vote in the same manner. And because I need to have consistency in my vote in the way I do it. And my problem with the vote for the dams is that it was premature. We don't have all the facts, we can't put it in front of the voters about what specifically is, should happen, could happen, may happen, because we don't have the facts and figures. So even though it was a really crappy decision to do, I had to vote that way. And I feel the same way here. This should not be a race. And I think we're racing forward to get a vote without following the rules that the town set down previously, that the whole deal should be in front of people. It's the same thing that I feel about the dams. We don't have the whole deal, we don't have the specifics, and we're asking, rushing ahead and asking the town to vote on something that was not following the agreement we had. And I feel very strongly about that. I agree with you, I agree with Steve, I agree with Tom. It's not fair because, and I think there's consistency in the way I vote on the dam, there'd be a consistency in the way I vote about it here.
Thanks, Mark. Allison, go ahead.
So, so what, there's a, just before, I'm worried that we're gonna forget, we do have a letter from...
Oh, go ahead.
Or do we want, are you still going, Bob?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Go ahead, read it, Allison.
So from Wyatt McConnell, who's a Rossinow resident. "Hello, Select Board, sorry for late email on this. I just received an email from Friends of Tannery Park raising alarms about Articles 15 and 16 being included on the warrant article. I'm a direct neighbor of the tannery site and was semi-involved with the group that eventually became the Friends of Tannery Park many years ago. I wanted to voice my support for inclusion of the warrant items on the ballot. Only in small-town politics can putting something on a ballot for folks to vote on be described by anyone as anti-democratic or an abuse of power. I would not support giving the Select Board carte blanche to negotiate terms of sale for the site, but these articles place sufficient restrictions to ensure the board acts in a manner that is fully consistent with what every workgroup on the tannery site has ever concluded, while giving the board sufficient flexibility and authority to allow any transaction to go forward in a manner less insane than making sure that any agreement must be approved by full consent of the town populace before it can be finalized. Cheers, Wyatt McConnell, 63 Rossinow."
Do we have another letter you wanted to read?
Um...
Asger?
No?
No, okay.
Should we read that one?
Do you want me to read it?
Yep.
Yep, Audrey, please.
Okay, so it's from Captain Asger G... Aggie? Am I, I'm sorry. Asger? Baggy? Okay, great. I feel bad when I butcher people's names. So, on proposed Articles 15 and 16. "Dear members of the Camden Select Board, although I am unwell and unable to attend this evening's meeting, I am writing to express my strong disapproval of your intentions with your proposed Articles 15 and 16 for the June vote in Camden. I served on the public committee that advised the Camden Select Board on the public's wishes for the tannery property, which the town acquired now about 20 years ago. Through public meetings and board discussions, oh, sorry, broad discussion, we learned that Camden voters felt strongly that Camden voters, not the five members of the Camden Select Board, wanted to be involved in the disposition of the tannery property. Voters also felt strongly, and continue to do so, based on the voting record to date, that the tannery property should be the permanent home of the Camden Farmers Market and that the green space should be retained for 'public use,' in italics, 'public use.' Please stop trying to get your way. The Camden voters have spoken, your job is to listen to them. Respectfully, Asger Bog... Baggy? Baggy. Or, sorry, Captain Asger Baggy."
Perfect, thank you, thank you, thank you. Steve. Those chairs are tough, those chairs are tough.
It's my engine room.
Oh.
You know, without spinning again and again, you know, these industrial shacks versus a park, I think one of the most important things that we heard tonight, and you heard it from other people, unfortunately, one of the things is people leave after their issue. But they talked about trust and they talked about democracy. And I think that's part of what's really at the heart of the issue here. It is an idea we need to put something before the voters. You gave Audrey an assignment. I wouldn't object to it if you came to a town meeting, as you all said we should, with a specific purchase and sale agreement. And then we can argue about all these details. Not enough money, not enough youth, not enough guarantees, et cetera. Instead, you're asking us to hand to you the right to determine all those things and the right to vote it in or vote it out, just the five of you, four of you, who knows what they'll be then. So I think it's important for you to, not so much, I know you want to get rid of the property, you want to get rid of the problem, you do, you've been dealing with it for a long time.
No, no, I'm sorry.
You want to get rid of the issue.
It doesn't matter what we say, Steve, it doesn't seem to matter.
How many times have I heard you say, "I don't want to kick the can down the road for another two weeks."
It depends on, it depends on, it's, yes.
He does want to kick the can, I'm telling you.
Actually, it depends on the issue, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you know, you're heading down a, he said, she said road and you can't, road and you can't win, lose, either one of us.
He said, she said, it's on film.
But this is not, there's no, I agree, I agree, I have mixed emotions about that side too.
So why not wait till Audrey gets a PNS?
We want Audrey to work on some other stuff, because there's a lot of important stuff going on in this town. And we don't want to have all of our town staff negotiating with, about the tannery forever and ever. Because you know what, it's really hard for us to...
Are you gonna do it?
So, so I'm gonna answer this question, and this is exactly what we said, what I said last time we talked about this issue. For me, the reason why I want to hear from the Camden voters is first of all, to have more people vote on this than the few people who would come to a town meeting addressing this issue, number one. Number two, is that it requires enormous amounts of energy, not only from Audra, but from at least one or two of us on the board. So what the voters are gonna tell me is, "Go ahead and negotiate, go ahead and pursue this avenue with Crane's Park," or, "No, we don't want to do it." And then we know that we can stop here and there if the answer is "no," or we can continue. We have 22 priorities, we are behind on almost every single one of them, and we are proposing to the town to help us make that decision, what could be more democratic.
What could be more democratic is let everybody make that decision.
That's why we're putting in on the warrant, so that, no, so that people, no, no!
But you're not giving them a decision on what it is.
Why don't you run for the Select Board, Steve? I mean, honestly, this is why people have voted for us.
I already told somebody that I would either shoot myself by the third meeting.
I admire you, I admire you.
That'd be great!
And as long as we're on Select Board business.
Okay.
Allison, so many times you stand up or sit there and say, "Many people have told me..." You know, there's 3,000 people in the town, I can't imagine that a thousand of them...
3,000 voters, 2,000 voters.
The census.
It's 5,000, 5,200.
I can't imagine that a thousand of them are running up to you and saying, "You know, I don't want to go to town meeting." If you don't want to go to town meeting, fine, you've given up your franchise.
People get so mad, they accuse us of voter disenfranchisement, they think we're doing it as a...
It's a new issue, because I think we can...
We have a warrant.
I can settle this.
Give us something specific to vote on.
And I want to say one more time that what this process we're going through with this is exactly the same process we go through in every other contract based, let me finish, that we go through in every single contract where the board's been given the authorization to, we don't have an agreement, but we're authorized to negotiate it and bring it to the table for the Select Board to decide whether or not it's adequate. You know, we could bring this PNS to the table and this board may not approve it, that's a possibility, sure, they may have different, but the public will have input, the public will have questions.
Well, since you haven't put a dollar value on this, I guess this is an advisory warrant article.
Didn't we say we're gonna...
No, 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 no. No, there is, I'm sorry, the proposal, the proposal does have financial aspects to it and other aspects, it's a sale of a property, just like we sold Willow Street to the Habitat.
No, we didn't, we gave it to them.
We gave it to them, we didn't sell it to them.
But we could have sold it.
But we didn't have all of the agreement and deed restrictions, et cetera, et cetera, when we made that decision either.
It's a dump truck.
I didn't say...
One house.
Nobody's saying it.
This is a far bigger issue.
Steve, I got other people that want to talk, so please, this gentleman, thank you. Thank you, and don't be afraid to run for Select Board.
The showing may not only be me.
Tom, Tom, let's keep, yeah.
I'll send you papers.
Yeah.
Hey, wait a minute, they're running against me this year.
Oh, yeah, no, there's two seats.
There's two seats.
There's two seats available, I'm sorry, would you reintroduce yourself?
Jeff Wolovitz, Woodcrest Avenue. This doesn't seem...
Let's have one conversation at a time, gentlemen, please.
First of all, this doesn't seem like this is just any other contract that's come across to the Select Board, this is a pretty hot issue, so...
Really?
Yeah, yeah, it's a town asset, it's a park.
It's not a park.
At the moment, it is serving as a park.
Mediation site, a highly contaminated remediation site.
So I would, unfortunately, I was here tonight, I would have much rather have been out on this lovely spring evening playing frisbee with my children in the park. So I moved about, maybe three-minute walk from the, from the tannery site. That was one of the attractions of that property, that's why I really liked that property, more than almost anything else about it, was that we could walk to the farmer's market in three minutes, we could walk down to the trail, it's part of our daily, daily loop that we use it. So, so it is an issue for a lot of people, I think, I see a lot of people there every day, walking through there and enjoying the property as it is. It seems to me that if you want to know what the town thinks of it, then don't beat around it and ask about this purchase and sale agreement. Ask, "Do you, should this property be sold? Do you know how many, what part of the town wants to sell it? Like what percent says, "Yes, let's sell it"?
Hold on, do you think that this doesn't ask that?
Yeah, I don't get it.
I think that is our intention, is to ask...
You ask us, "If you want to sell it, sell it for what, to be a nuclear power plant?"
Do you want, what's that?
If I'm gonna go voting on something personally that says, "Do you want to sell that property, for what? To be, to be a, well, they tried it once, wasn't it an EMS facility that was rejected?"
That was...
That never went to voters, though.
No, it didn't, but, you know, you, you, we're, our job...
Because you guys stopped it, the plumber was like, "Okay, we won't even ask."
Our job, as I, it was explained to the previous group, was to go through development of information, we did, we did RFP, got responses, we evaluated them, used committees to evaluate them, we brought it to a head last year, it didn't work because of some logistic elements that were time-related because of short views, and we just brought it back, the same, the same information we developed, we brought it to the table, and this is a recommendation or a request for the town voters to say, "Do you want to sell it for this purpose or not?"
But it seems like a significant part of the town just would like it left as green space.
Well, then they'll vote "no."
But what, so, so...
They're not gonna say, "Leave it as green space."
No, no, but so, so, we cannot, we cannot use what people, we need to have a vote, we need to know what people want. A significant part of the town wants X, I can, is not, is not something, is not a piece of data for us.
Right.
And we went...
That's why we're asking the town to vote on this.
We had many sessions...
And by the way, since the last time it was voted on, the town has changed. And I think people who live here, who weren't there nine years ago, also have a right to express themselves. And inviting them to vote on this article would allow them to express themselves. So, you know, you can't rely on votes that are nine, eight, nine, 10 years old, because things change, people change, people change their minds, and new people come, and they haven't expressed themselves. So, you don't think a Facebook referendum is something that we can act on?
You know, the Riverwalk will always be there, the two things that you referenced that are, that are special about it, and I know there's more than that, and I, that open green space is a big deal, and that, some of that could be part of what gets negotiated. But the farmer's market always having a place to be is, is one of the things that I think we've all committed to not negotiating on. And that's, how that looks would be something in our purview to negotiate in the Riverwalk.
How can you ensure that the farmer's market will always be there once it's owned by a private individual?
Oh, no, they're all, this is, this is very common, but they're...
In this ballot, in this ballot, it says, "The premises to continued availability." If you vote for that, that's what you're voting for.
Yeah, and then he increases the rent to the farmer's market.
No, no, they won't, no, that, no, that's what we would have to secure, is a deed restriction, securing that, and if we can't do it in a way that seems acceptable, you have to remember, we live here, we have, I have kids, I walk there, I see people with kids, we all, we all live here and do not want people to hate us. Like, I share a lot of the same things, my son was out there with his, with his remote-control car the other day, having the time of his life. And I said, "Don't go up on the dirt pile, because you're gonna get it, you know, then you're gonna ruin it for everybody." Like, I, I get it that that's really valuable, and I think all of, and for, because a lot of our other parks are like, there's so many rules about what you can do and what you can't, and, so, we are, there's already an effort to retain some of that. And the last time that the Select Board, none of us were here, but they did ask voters for, they did a straw poll, "Do you want commercial, industrial, or do you want park green space?" And it came out slightly in favor of the, of the commercial thing. And everybody said, "Well, we didn't like..." Yeah, of course. So it's been this thing, this is actually the opportunity to stop being mired, and this, it's, it's an opportunity for it to be a concrete vote that says, "All right, the Select Board comes with the best that we could do in terms of selling the property, and then the town rejects it." And then that would actually allow a phase to be closed, and it could be the very best thing for the outcome that many of you have been advocating for. Because then you'd really be able to say, "You guys did your best with a possible sale, and people didn't want that." So now, in my mind, that would, that would be somewhat of a mandate to come up with a different plan. It could turn out to be a very positive thing.
If it's 51-49, then...
That was like the straw poll thing that none of us liked either, you know, it wasn't...
You gotta be careful with straw polls for that reason, they come close, you're not sure what you're getting out of it. This is just a proposal, this we do all the time, to voters to say yes or no, and you're, I'm clearly gonna say, "No, it's fine," you know, this whole bunch of people are probably gonna say, "No." Some, a lot of people don't even know, I hate to say this, where the tannery is, and there are some people in the outskirts of this town, I was surprised, said, "Where's the tannery?" I said, you know, I explained that they understood where it is, I don't want to exaggerate that, but they are not as tuned as some of you who, of course, live and care very much about your surroundings. We are very cognizant of all the points Steve made about elements of purchase and sale, they're very, very important, important to us too, by the way, we only look stupid, so...
It'd be a very different discussion if this lane was on Bayview Street.
It wouldn't, oh, I don't think so, I don't think so. But anyhow, thank you very much.
I don't know.
Tom, last one, and we have to revert to the decision-making, okay?
It would be the same.
So what we're arguing about here is not whether there should be a vote, but a vote on something. There, you have, you have not, you have, you have not, there is no purchase and sale agreement. I have a, your suggestion, that you find out, okay, what you could do is have a vote to see whether the town wants you to engage in a purchase and sale agreement. But then you need to pledge to allow that purchase and sale agreement to come to a final vote of the people, why wouldn't you?
Because that's never...
You did the first step, which would allow Audrey to take the time to actually negotiate it for a reason, because you might actually get a sale. But allow the, allow the citizens then to do a final vote on that negotiated purchase and sale agreement you entered into. That's the only way it's democratic.
All right, thank you.
Any purchase and sale agreement that you would actually support, though, it's, I don't, I mean...
It's not about me, it's about the town, it's about the town.
Other people's...
We can argue this to term, but just so you know, also the purchase and sale, or the agreement, whatever you want to call it, is still in being negotiated. And because of ballot printing restrictions, which you should be aware of, earlier even this year, because of this new restrictions on ballots for, just for the disabled, we have to, we're a month, we're a month earlier in our schedule, we had budget in March when we usually have it, in April. We can't, because in April, we have to finalize the printing, we'll get backed up, that's what caused some of this. But it's still in heated negotiation with, heated because it's intense, with Crane's Park, not because we're yelling at each other, but it, we have fully, to get it done ASAP, it just won't be done for availability to put on a ballot.
So what's the rush? There's no rush on the dam, why is there a rush on this?
Because we've been down this road before and we've done evaluations, I told you before, but you didn't say that last year when we were going to do, tell the purchase and sale for the then-proposed Crane's Park option that we had agreed to, you know, we were going to get that to the ballot last June, if you recall. And that's, we're doing the same thing, but, but, the only difference is, we're taking thing, but, but all, the only difference is, we're taking the same approach we take on every single major contract this town does, without exception, but I had a hand up back there with a gentleman with the mask, I've already forgotten your name, because I'm getting old, because I'm getting, because I'm getting.
Over Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions here.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Gets to be habitual, I hate to say. So, is there a purchase price that has been agreed upon yet?
Yes.
Is that public record?
Well, we're going to make that comment in a minute, I think it should be in the, in the warrant.
Well, I think very definitely.
Just to answer your question, it's, this refers to proposal, the proposal specifies the purchase price.
It's $250,000.
That is correct.
How much of the actual proposal is available for public viewing?
All of it.
All of it.
All of it now?
Yes.
On the town's website?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
On the website, yes.
Or I go be rabble rouser, I might as well know what I'm talking about. Okay, all right, so that's available there.
Yep, yep.
So is this, when it goes to the ballot, is it going to be a secret ballot?
It's, you're going to, on paper, on written paper, yeah.
Which is possible to vote for absentee, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, that all adds to all of this and stuff, so, okay. Do you know roughly what the contaminant situation is on the property?
Yeah.
Is that, no, no, no.
It's a, it's a very good question.
It's, there's, there's a parallel effort to get this, the town, to get this brownfield site off of, get it, get it remediated, period. And there have been numerous reports on contaminants, and, but, you know, the contaminant issue is a moving target.
I realize that, but I just wonder how much in depth, you know, is it core samples done everywhere, or is it just a service?
There were some core samples that have been done, we may need to do more.
But there have been thousands of pages of reports over the, and it's all on the town website.
Okay, I just, you know.
Yeah, sure.
I'm doing my homework, so, okay.
No, it's great, thank you.
All right, okay, I have no other questions at the moment.
Thank you very much, sir, good to see you again.
Are you an attorney? That sounded like an attorney question.
Steve, please. Sorry. You've got to get your back moving.
Yeah. Can I extract from you a promise that if you do come up with a PNS agreement, that you make it public at least three or four weeks before you vote on it?
Well, I'd like to make it longer than that, but I.
Fine, two months.
Well, no, 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 what I say this is because in, in the ideal world, we might have it available before election.
Oh, well, you know what, I don't like that, because I, I want to know what people vote on things before we spend any more time on.
That's what it means.
But there's going to be a time.
You're the only ones that are voting on it.
True.
I think you need to give us, if it happens, and I'm hoping it doesn't, you need to give us a chance to look at it, to debate it, to renounce it, to advertise the crookedness of it all.
I like public input, generally speaking, because I feel it's usually valuable when put out broadly, so we generally do.
I mean, Steve, would you say that, like, you've, you've had, like, a pretty decent back-and-forth debate about this tonight? Like, fairly decent.
Not successful, I can see it.
I mean, well, no, I'm just saying.
I can see a woman talk about democracy and trust, and then just go 180 from that. Personally, I'm voting for Mark for both seats.
Thank you.
Mark's really great, we all agree on that.
You know what, Steve, in, in 2024, my seat is up. I love gardening and sailing.
Well, you may be safe.
Bob and I are up even sooner.
I, you know, I take your comment on democracy to heart, basically, you know, don't, don't, don't assume that, I mean, we, I, I think about those things, I ask questions, I try to understand what's the best way to gather people's intent, and what, what do they want us to do, and I, I do believe that asking them the question, do you want us to pursue this, yes or no, is a very straightforward question, and I, I, I'm just imagining that if we came to the town with a contract and say, vote yes or no on this contract, we would have 50 people in a room saying, you've negotiated in secret. So, so I'm, no, we're not, because the terms, the basic terms of the agreement are out there, and we're still negotiating.
I haven't been invited to a meeting with Audra and Mr. Mullins. You might be.
This is like the most information there is right now, like, this is, this is the extent of it, us talking like this, and, and Bob saying the thing he just said, well, I hope it's going to be ready before town meeting, and us saying, I don't know about that, Bob, I don't like what I just heard, that's, that's it.
But to your point, we want to get it to you as soon as we can for review, yes, yes.
We wouldn't, yeah.
I have a quick question for Allison based on something she already said.
I don't want to get it back, he said, she said, but.
No, it's not the question, something she said tonight.
Well, go ahead, please, quickly, and that's going to be, I'm going to close it at that point.
The last thing.
The last thing, I doubt it.
So you, you all agreed you're going to state on the warrant, who favors and opposes, how many of you favor and oppose?
Yes.
Each of the warrant articles?
Yes.
Well, Allison just said a little while ago, personally, she would vote no on this issue.
No, no, that's not, no, she didn't, no, you missed.
What do you mean?
No.
That's what she said.
She would be against the issue if she voted on it.
Tom, you just said to me, we're going to, he said, she said, you're wrong, stop.
I'll answer really quickly.
That's what she said.
No.
Real quick retort, and then we're done, because I don't want to get to he said, she said.
That's very true, Steve, that's what Bob's worried about, too.
I can answer if you want.
I want people to, to vote on it. I personally, I would like there to be more of a hybrid solution, and we'll be okay and happy with it being a park and finding funding and doing something different, but I also think we need money for lots of things, and I don't know yet if we could find all the money that we need to do what needs to be done at the Tannery. That's a big thing, we're still making payments on the cleanup, and there's a bunch of cleanup that still needs to happen, and so.
What the reeds have done in last year will pay for all of that.
Do you want to sell the Tannery to them? Is that what you're saying? I mean.
The increases in taxes that they've created in the community last year.
Yeah.
That is, I.
I'm sorry, I don't have people lining up at my door saying, go ahead and increase the town budget as much as you want, we can all afford it, that's not something that I hear on a regular basis.
So I think, I think the bottom line is that when we vote, when we vote on the.
Timeout, folks, exactly what I said, I don't want to get into, we're getting into what he said, she said, it's over, we're going to get back, we're going to have to go to the select board decision on this order.
And just one thing, I, I would strongly suggest to my fellow Camden citizens not to assume how I'm going to vote on any of the warrant articles, just because as a select person, I vote to put them on the warrant. I am still a citizen of Camden, and it is not because I support putting a warrant on a ballot that I will vote for it, or my, my vote is my own, and I am not going to disclose here how I'm going to vote. So those are two different things, Tom, and you're trying to confuse the issue. No.
Stop.
And I'm going to stop here.
Stop, we're, no, no.
You list if you favor adopting it, it will already be on there.
No.
Oh, no, all right, all right, all right.
She just asked to negotiate it.
We have, we have a basis of disagreement, as we did in the previous item, we understand that very clear, we've heard you very clearly, however, we're going to move forward with.
Emotion.
Yes, well, before we make the motion, I'd like to make, as part of that motion, one, one small change on, my last, my computer's been shutting off because I've been talking so long, hold on a second, one second, I'll get it back, okay, to Article 16, as, as I have discussed this with some people who asked questions about the Tannery, and I, I said we were proposing to possibly put this option on, they all asked the same question, every man and woman, it was basically, you've also, somebody mentioned it, the purchase price, so I think we should add a bullet after the first one, is a bullet two, which says the purchase, whatever the right words are, Bill, the purchase price in the proposal, or whatever the words are, is $250,000. I'm not sure what exact wording we should use, it's a fact, it's in the proposal, and it's a key element, and I didn't think it was.
Want to say, like, a purchase price of no less than $250,000?
But, yes.
Oh, Audra's going for.
Yeah, that's fine.
She wants to keep my right, couldn't be more.
Constrain yourselves.
This is, that purchase price should be earmarked as matching funds for a potential grant.
There's been subsequent communication beyond that point about the purchase price, the point is, the developer's writing, if, if the deal's closed, $250,000 checked to the town of Camden.
In the, in the proposal, he, he did, he did give that as a suggestion, what, when, when asked about it, he clarified that it was a suggestion of a possible use for it, not a, you know, criteria for him, he said the town would be free to do with it, whatever.
He clarified that later, Steve, to your question, so, but I think, the words again, so we'd be clear.
So, let me just bring up the article.
Where are you putting this in the article, new article?
It could be number two.
Yeah, number two.
To negotiate a purchase price of no less than $250,000.
Yep, all right, with that, we can go forward.
So I'm going to make a motion that the select board approves Articles 15, 16, and 17, with the addition of a clause number two in Article 16, stating that the select board will, the town of Camden will negotiate a purchase price of no less than $250,000. Second.
A motion made, the second, and further discussion, board.
Yes.
Marco.
I disagree with adding the purchase price in, because I think that's a positive that may sway, sway people's votes without them knowing the rest of the situation, and I don't think that's fair.
Okay, with that, all those in favor? Opposed.
Strongly opposed.
It's still one vote. The bottom line then, Audra, as I understand it, that other than those first couple, we would be four, zero, zero, and everything except for 15, 16, and 17, which would be three, zero, one. Correct? All right.
Three, zero, one, or three, one, zero?
Three, one, zero. Three, one, sorry, thank you, Mark. With that, we'll move on to the approval of a Vittler license for Free Street N and Hideaway N. Any comments, Mark?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Vittler license and lodging licenses for Free Street N and Hideaway N.
I second.
Motion made in second, and discussion, all those in favor, four, zero, zero. Onto.
Where they're leaving, I'm going to go there.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, it's like a million degrees in here.
It's a warm weather.
Well, I think we have, we're, we're on the, we're on the different.
He ran, he ran when he saw you get up.
Thank you for a vigorous discussion, thank you, I appreciate it.
Hey, Steve.
I do.
Steve, good luck with your engine compartment.
Thank you, tomorrow will tell the day.
You, you might have made yourself a write-in candidate for the select board.
Yeah.
I'm going to write him in.
Oh, don't, for me.
Audra, do you really want me sitting on the opposite of the dais?
Yes.
We have good, we have good debates.
We have good debates.
You've got to be tough to be on the select boards. Most people aren't tough enough to handle all the input, but I think you are.
It's tough, it's tough being up here.
Regardless of what everybody in the town says, you're a very reasonable person.
I didn't get that last one.
I said, no matter what everybody says, you're a very reasonable person. All right.
And thanks for the support on the peers.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve.
Item 4D.
Unifying issue, right.
Item 4D, which regards the appointments for the Camden Conservation, are we a little premature on that one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that was all about, because not everybody's application is even in there, but it did serve as a good catalyst or reminder to, to set a time for, what we said is we were going to have a couple sort of introductory meetings to make sure everybody sort of is understanding what we would do and willing to do things like read the comprehensive plan and be a bit more integrated into other things that the Conservation Commission might do. Setting a time for that meeting is challenging if we try to make it so that everybody can meet, and, you know, everybody that's expressed interest in the Conservation Commission, so what, with the select board's sort of endorsement, I think we'll just set a time for the first one that will be the same time that the Conservation Commission used to meet, which is Wednesdays at six, or 6:30, or.
Eight?
Oh, it was going to be the next, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
So tomorrow is the sixth or 13th?
So we'll send out an email to everybody that.
April 13th, okay, and are you suggesting we table this until after the 13th?
Yeah, because the whole idea was to have a conversation with the, with the group and see what kind of skills we had, and.
My bad, I didn't think, even questioned it, but do you want to table this for now?
That's a shorter way of saying it.
That's good. I'll make a motion, we table Conservation Commission appointments until after a meeting has been held.
Second.
Motion made in second, and a discussion, all those in favor, four, zero, zero. Lastly, on the action list is the proclamation designated Monday, May 16, 2022, as Arbor Day in Camden.
I love this proclamation, it's my mother's birthday, so I was really touched by the date, because I miss her dearly, so.
Then you're going to have to, oh, well, make her fly up.
What?
Make her fly up for Arbor Day.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, so I'm making the motion.
Okay.
Making the motion that we approve the proclamation for Arbor Day on May 16.
Okay.
Second.
April or May, it's April or May, May, okay, sorry.
And call it Jacqueline Miller Day.
Do you have a second? I think Mark did.
A second.
A discussion, I'll.
I have some discussion.
Go ahead, please.
I've had a discussion, Nancy Cottle-Johnson, and she had some comments about this. Number one, she said there's a dead sugar maple at the corner of Park and Main that needs to come down, but more importantly, she said that in honor of the revival of Arbor Day in Camden, treekeepers and Nancy and her husband will donate one and three-quarter to two-and-a-half-inch caliper crab apples, and, and plant it in honor of the revival of Arbor Day. If accepted, they'll order right away. On May 16th, they will plant the tree, and I think, I think there was a number of them, not just, I didn't write how many they were going to do, but they will plant some trees in honor.
And to, to just give some context, Nancy and Doug have been so amazing, like, the reason why we've been so consistently been a tree city and celebrated Arbor Day every year was because of Doug and Nancy, and during COVID, when some of these things slipped through the cracks, you know, we forgot to do it, and so, you know, I think I want to do a better job for Doug and Nancy of making sure we remember this every year, and thank you to Janice for reminding me that this was something that we needed to pick up again.
Okay, cool. All those in favor?
Yes, I think it's.
Four, zero.
Thank you, Nancy.
Oh, thank you.
And encouraging all citizens of Camden to plant trees that they, because that's the whole idea.
Yeah, I planted because of Nancy saying, you know, you should just not do the, well, she, she wasn't discouraging the town tree program, but she got me to get a tree, and I planted it on Arbor Day several years ago, and it's in my front yard, and it's, and it's grown a lot, it's, and it makes me so happy.
We have a couple of discussion items, going to add a few general ones, but the first most important one is the, the new, new proposed lease for the owners of Harbor Dogs, which is in our packet. Background, Audra, on this lease, which is for, I mean, it's for Harbor Dogs, but I was looking for the duration.
Yes, so this, there, there is precedent for this, so, you know, when, when Jesse and Allison took over the business, was it 10 years ago?
Yeah.
They had to, they went through a very similar process to what's happening tonight with, you know, Jason buying the business.
Yep.
And so, you know, really, it's, because the license isn't transferable, it needs to be assigned to the, the owners of the business, you know, it's just going through the process of now assigning it to, to Jason. And I think that the proposal is just for the remainder of the term.
Which is?
It says, permission shall extend for a period of five years for each summer season, beginning each year on May 1st, and ending October 1st, 2027.
Is, is this for a new five-year lease, or is this an extended?
Looks for like a new five-year lease.
That's right.
New lease.
And, okay, anything else, we should know before we ask questions?
Um, there's, there's a couple of little things, so, I think.
The parking spot.
The parking spot, so it would be pretty inconsistent with what the town has done with all the other businesses operating off the public landing, if we were to give this business a designated parking spot, but, you know, I understand they're going to need to do loading and unloading, so that's, you know, something we can, you know, absolutely accommodate with, you know, Jason and his team down there. I would say that there was, I'm trying to think of, maybe Bill remembers, was it the automatic 10-year renewal without coming back before the board?
I mean, there's a more general discussion to be had, too, aside from the nitty-gritty of the contract, and it's, you know, sort of those uncomfortable conversations that we have every time somebody else wants to do something on the public landing, you know, recently, we had a, an application asking for permission to have a, was it a popcorn?
Yes, it was.
A popcorn booth, and we said no, that we just weren't sure that the public landing could accommodate another food vendor, and that we didn't have a process, and, you know, and that always turns into questions about like, well, how come this person gets to be there, and how come this person gets to be there? And, and, you know, the simple answer is that it's just because it's been like that for a long time, and everybody's feels comfortable, and it's worked out, and so that's what the town has felt comfortable renewing. But it always feels a little bit, you know, unfair then to say, you know, it's, it's an automatic no for anybody else, you know, it's, it's, they use, it's putting a, a building, a small building on town property, and, and running a business there, and it's not like an open market of competition to, it's not like the Snowball where we put it out to bed every, you know, couple of years and have a competitive process, and we're not saying to, to the community, here's an opportunity for everybody to put in their proposals for what they would do in that space. So I, I mean, I just want to kind of acknowledge that in terms of what, when we do the, the terms, and the, you know, the amount of time on the lease, it's kind of, we, we have promised in the past that we really need to look at this in terms of like a general policy of, do we have, you know, do we have room for Harbor Dogs and a popcorn stand, or, and we, and we always just kind of avoid it because it's an uncomfortable conversation, because I want Har, personally, it works fine for me, I want Harbor Dogs to be there, it has, as long as it's going to be pretty much the same, I'm comfortable with that. I would like the hours to be a little bit expanded, possibly.
Stepping.
You know, but, and, and that, it is our job to kind of look at that as a public service, we've decided, or Select Boards in the past decided, that people want to be able to get food on the public landing enough to justify taking up some of our public space and having a business there, so.
Mark.
I don't know, five years.
A couple of things, number one, I think you could consider it grandfathered in, maybe the way to look at it, and especially because it's, it's a business that, that sells each time, it would be really unfair to take over the lease if, if people lost, lost the business, you know, if you, you bought the business and then it, you know, we took away the, the lease, it would be, that's a hard one to justify. I do have a question, however, about the designated parking space. It, right here, it says, the use of a designated parking space shall terminate the expiration of this agreement, because one of the things, it's, I have a hard time, and nothing personal, but I have a hard time saying it's okay for them to have a space, but yet, we took the spaces away from the day sailors, and the businesses are somewhat similar.
Oh, and the other businesses on Main Street, so, I mean, we, I think we already said that, that it would just be totally inconsistent.
We have to, we have to modify that, in my opinion, too, I agree. We, we got to be consistent, and that's, that's what, that's one key item. Sophie, you had your hand up, too.
Yeah, I have my hand up, because at the end of the first five-year lease period, licensee reserves the right, licensee reserves the right to renegotiate the annual lease increase with the town, so is this, is this a lease that automatically renews?
Well, at least, you've talked about the rental, or the, or the, the payment per year, it, it specifies a 5% increase per year.
I mean, the thing is, we don't actually have the authority to.
But it's only, it does, I, I, I mean, unless I missed it, I don't see the renewal clause.
So it's a, it's a revocable license agreement, like any of the other ones? Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's important, because to Allison's point, if, I believe it's important we are fair, you know, and I, you know, guys are institution down there, and I love it, but we got to be fair when other people come to us and say we'd like to do something similar, or small, we, we've got to be consistent in what we do, and we haven't developed that process yet, Bill.
Just so you folks are looking at the right document instead of the one on your computer, Janice handed one out that had some amendments that I had made that perhaps wasn't before you, so, I just wanted to, nothing terribly fascinating, but if I could just go through those quickly.
Yeah, please.
So, one thing was, since it's a license agreement, we don't want to chase a corporation, we would include the name of the individual, who, I guess, whoever, I'm not sure how you pronounce the last name, Jason, is it Doppelt?
I know the feeling.
I think it should be in an individual's name. The second thing was on page two, where it says, licensee requests this change, and then there's a colon and a paragraph, that it gets us into what looks and feels like a lease, which you don't have the right to do, so I take that out entirely. And then, how this reads is, it's, so we don't come back every year, it's sort of a five-year lease, I'm sorry, license, but importantly, for people listening, there is the provision of termination any year, as long as it happens prior to February 1.
I see.
This is why it is a license and not a lease.
I see.
If we do extended period of time, it's a lease, and it has to be approved by Town Meeting.
Got it.
So that's, that was another.
Got it.
Just a clarification, and otherwise, I don't think I really messed with too much other than that.
Good.
That clause I just read, at the end of the fi, the first five-year lease period, that's going to go, at the, at the bottom of paragraph two.
Yeah, it's the big red.
It's a big red thing.
The rental fee of the following years will be paid prior to commitments of, at the end of the first, first five-year lease period, licensee reserves the right to renegotiate the annual lease increase with the town.
That's going away.
I, I think it's, I mean, when a lease expires, of course you can negotiate anything you want.
But it's on a lease. What we're saying is on a lease.
To license.
To license.
Oh, absolute, oh, yeah, I, I get it, yeah, when the license expires.
Like, another way to think about it is, like, you could come to them every year and.
Yeah, you could always do that, too.
Negotiate that.
Yeah.
Because, you know, 20 years down the road, you know, it's pretty expensive.
Yep.
So it's just like, trying to keep it affordable down there, and so I'm not having to charge $10 for a Harbordog.
Unfortunately, with inflation, you might have to.
Actually, Jason, do you want to come up to the microphone, because I don't know if you all recognize Jason, but he's.
Yes, yes, I remember the snowball.
Yeah.
And if you'd introduce yourself, it'd be great.
Uh, how do you, my name's Jason Doppelt, Camden resident, 63 Pearl Street, been owning or operating the food concessions at the Snowball this first season.
Right.
Had a great time, really enjoyed working with the community, and feeding everybody, and I kind of want to continue that on a year-round basis, keeping the community fed, and my goal is to make sure I'm employing people of the community, and keeping what money I make in the community. Everything I do, from my insurance to my bank, is all here in the community, so I'm trying to.
Sure.
Do what I can to.
Sure.
Keep it in the community, so.
An interest in continuing with the Snowball?
Yeah.
It wasn't.
Yeah, no, it was.
Scare you away?
It was a.
Mark has a question.
I have a very important question, that the consistency of the product either be the same or better than it was, because it's my son's favorite place to eat, and I don't want him to be disappointed this summer.
I, I guarantee you, it'll be the same or better.
Cool, thank you very much, because, you know, there's a lot riding at home for me on this one.
Yeah.
I talk about this place a lot at home, too.
Vegan dogs?
We do have vegan dogs, yeah. Well, vegetarian, I don't know if they're vegan.
Vegetarian's good enough.
Okay.
Well, I guess, I guess, I just have one kind of tongue-in-cheek question, because you know what I think about numbers, how do we come up with 2,460, it was 46 cents?
I'm guessing, and this is just a guess, that that's kind of, you know, they started at that, whatever number they started at, and that the 5% applied to it.
How about, we round it off to 2,500, and 5% becomes an even number every year?
I think everybody would appreciate that.
Is that okay, Jason?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't under, I bristle when we do budgets, we do a budget for $10,400,000, and somebody puts in a budget for $503,16, you got to be kidding.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
So I would suggest, as a, as a minimal change, make it 2,500 even, and then 5% added, that keeps a round number of a year, you keep the pennies.
And now, does this seem reasonable, what does that, is that sort of similar to a day sailor in some ways?
Yes, it is, it's very.
It's similar, I'd also say that we went through a lot of these in the, with the City of Rockland, because they have a lot more spaces for concessionaires, or, yeah, on the waterfront, and it's, it's very, very consistent with what they were charging.
Marco.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the license for Harbor Dog, if that's what we're doing, or is it just a discussion?
Well, it's a discussion item, we, we could, I, but, I mean, it's not going to get disapproved, but.
We did just, we did put on the agenda that it was a discussion.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a discussion, I'll get it cleaned up, and we'll bring it back for what we call consent agenda item, which means we're not going to debate it, we're going to approve it.
Well, it also gives people the, it goes through the process of giving people the opportunity to come and say something if they.
Let's get a, let's get an unread line, black and white copy with $24,000, if it's okay with you, Jason, and, and, and get it to the near-term Select Board meeting, but not to worry.
Okay.
One last question, Audra, because we're losing $24.46, is that going to screw up the budget this year?
I, I think I can make it work.
Okay, good.
Thanks for coming, Jason.
Thank you, guys, for having us.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
It's the process.
Thank you.
Jason.
So, the next Select Board meeting?
We could, we could do it.
Oh, well, yeah, we'll be able to make it.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I was just trying to be open for the first week of May.
Just do it, just do it.
The most important question, when are you going to open?
Yeah, hopefully, hopefully the first week of May, is what we're shooting for.
That's what I need to.
That's, that's our game plan.
We'll, we'll have it on the 19th, April 19th is our next meeting.
Okay.
Fantastic, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Couple of small things I wanted to add, not so much discussion, we don't have to cover them, others want to, but one was, we've got a few things going on, at least which is the potential, not potential, absolute situation when Audra's going to be leaving us for a short time after she delivers her baby, and that's affecting the May schedule a bit. Right now, our May schedule, as you look up there, we have currently May 10th and 24th as meeting dates. The 24th is, well, from a couple of reasons, but it's getting very close to Audra's potential due date, and we need, my concern would be, Board, that, you know, if we come up with the 24th with anything, she's not going to have any time to get it done, so I'm suggesting that we move to, and, and since we already adjusted April, we adjust May to make our Select Board meetings on May 3rd and 17th. You can't?
Oh, no.
Already committed?
I have a board meeting in Boston, second, third, and fourth, all day, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so if you want.
Oh, just in time.
I can have a board dinner.
Oh, that's on, on the 3rd, second, third.
On the 3rd, yeah, have the board dinner on the 3rd, and, and, and a board, and a.
Does it have to be on a Tuesday?
No. No.
We can do Cinco de Mayo with margaritas.
I'll be, I'll be in Philadelphia on the 5th, so, 4th and 5th, and 6th.
Well, no, it doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, it can be any day we want, we could do.
Monday the 2nd?
We could do Monday the 2nd, and, no, no, she's gone.
I can't.
She's gone, we have to do, we have to do Wednesday, May 4th, and Wednesday, May 18th, no, I'm sorry, Wednesday, May 4th, and Tuesday, the 17th.
I will be in Philadelphia on Wednesday, May 4th.
Okay.
I think it sounds like we're pretty locked into the 10th and 24th.
Yeah, okay, we'll stay with it.
But that's, don't worry about me.
All right, I'm, we don't, don't worry, we don't.
It'll be what it is.
All right, the last thing, Town Report, do we have names attached to everything we needed to supply for that report?
No.
What do you mean?
Well.
Some of this is a surprise.
Yeah, so, so you all need to.
Who's putting together the photos, the covers, who's going to coordinate that? Who's going to record, coordinate the dedication piece? Who's going to write the Select Board input for the, for that Town Report? Something we always had.
Oh, we never talk about this in meetings, and usually it's just like a panic-stricken, everybody just, I really like doing the part that I've been doing.
Well, Janice, can we get a, an email tomorrow, a bullet list of what you need, what you actually need by item? I think you've already done that.
I think she did that, yeah.
She did that, she did.
Send it so that every.
I saw it this morning.
And we'll try to coordinate.
Happy to tag team with Allison?
Yeah, how about?
We can, do, we can take the whole thing, the two of us, we can tag team and get it done?
We'll, we'll send it for approval.
Perfect, thank you.
We won't like go crazy in the Select Board, yeah, yeah.
Because I can't, I can't write anyway, so.
Hey, I, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion that you leave Bob and I out of it, because.
Yeah.
If you want it done, get the women to do it.
So two, two reports, then, Audra, do you have anything you'd like to report in the Town Management Report?
I, I don't have anything additional.
Select Board, starting with Sophie.
No, I, I.
Marco.
I would have if, if the Harvard could be.
Oh, but I can't see Allison's hand.
Pick me.
Allison.
Yes, so, we have the annual Leonard Lookner Memorial Roadside Cleanup coming up, it's going to work well with Earth Day, Earth Day's supposed to be in the name, too, and the dates that we're setting for that are the 22nd and the 23rd of April, which is, falls right on Earth Day. We're going to do a lot of it in a, in a similar way, where there will be an option